Good evening and welcome to the May 12, 2022 Johnson County Board of Trustees Meeting held tonight here in person in GEB 137 and via Zoom. So, welcome to everyone. If you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance for this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome again. I see that we have five trustees in person. Trustee Rutan, Muzel, Ingram, and Kostin. And who do we have? Trustee Smith Everett and trustee Hamil via Zoom. So, we are all present and thus there is a quorum. Awards in recognition tonight. Caitlin, is it Si?
C.
C, excuse me.
Caitlin, would you like to come up? As you know, for me, and I think you probably joined me in saying this, one of the highlights of every one of our meetings is getting to spend time with our students, whether they're presenting as the president of Student Senate or joining us as a student that we spotlighted each month. And so, today, I'd love to introduce to you Caitlin C. Caitlin?
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. So, my name is Caitlin C. I was born to immigrant parents and I was homeschooled from kindergarten through high school. I started dual enrollment when I was 15 and I started full-time here at JCCC in 2020. As most of us know, 2020 was a challenging year for a lot of people, but I'm very grateful for how well JCCC handled the pandemic and pivoting to an online environment. A lot of my professors provided a great learning and experience and a wonderful classroom environment despite the virtual platform. And I also had a lot of opportunities to get involved even with the virtual setting. So, some examples would be the Zoom Honors Hangouts that helped build my professional network, helped build those relationships with staff and faculty, and also helped create that sense of community that was kind of difficult to have when we were all remote. In addition, I had the opportunity to become involved with JCCC Students Sustainability Committee and also got to do some online tutoring for disabled students. Eventually, with 2021 came the transition back to campus and that brought with it new opportunities for me to get involved as well. So, I got my first job as an honors ambassador and I've been really enjoying that position. I also got to become Vice President of the Honor Student Association. It's been challenging but rewarding to work alongside Shelby and the other HSA officers to help bring back student engagement despite the pandemic. I've also become co-chair of the Students Sustainability Committee and had the opportunity to serve as a student representative on the committee that is currently working on JCCC's first sustainability policy. And it does definitely mean a lot to me that the organization would give an ear to issues that mean a lot to students, including myself. I'm very grateful for all the opportunities that JCCC has given me to learn and grow, but also definitely for the support, including financial aid. Thanks to all the scholarships and grants that I've received here at JCCC, I'm well on my way to finishing my associate's degree here debt-free. And this has allowed me to focus on my education without worrying about money and also has allowed me to save for the future. So, this semester is my last full-length semester here at JCCC and I'll be transferring to KU in the fall to complete my bachelor's degree in biotechnology from which I hope to proceed to medical school. So, I'm so grateful for all the opportunities that have been available to me at JCCC and my time here has definitely prepared me for my next step. And I'm grateful to all of you for the roles that you've played in making that happen.
Well, thank you very much. Any questions for Caitlin?
I had a chance to sit with Caitlin at the Honor Student Lunch this past week and really enjoyed that. And the great part about her was when she's successful in medical school, she's going into gerontology, so she'll be able to take care of me. That may not have been a commitment you made or not, but talk to us about the transition from homeschooling to JCCC and how that worked for you.
Well, yes, that was actually something very interesting. When I was homeschooled, we were using a curriculum where it's actually a real classroom that they took a video of. And that's pretty much what online learning was like. Essentially, it's just a professor with, you know, maybe a Zoom meeting or pre-recorded lectures. And the online environment, yes, probably was challenging for some, but honestly, to me, I just felt like a fish in water, like getting to do my classes from home. You know, it was a more gradual transition from being homeschooled versus, you know, just jumping into in-person classes right away. So, I honestly found the transition very helpful.
Thank you. Good luck.
Trustee Ingram.
Yes, Caitlin, thank you. We're glad you're here. Are you going to be in graduation?
So, I'm graduating at the end of the summer term.
Okay.
But I will be with the honors program graduation tomorrow.
Okay, good, good, good. So, we'll see you there. The one question that I would have for you is regarding sustainability and maybe some advice that you would give to us as we move forward with that process that you were talking about, that you were a part of.
Yes. So, a lot of times when people think of sustainability, they think about the environmental slash ecological pillars of sustainability, which definitely are important. Pretty much all the other pillars of sustainability rest on those, let's say, you know, social, economic, cultural, all rest on whether or not we have a healthy planet. But one of the interesting takeaways that I've gotten through my time here at JCCC and with honors and sustainability has been the importance of a multidisciplinary interdisciplinary approach to education. One of the lessons I've learned is that compartmentalization doesn't always equal organization. And sometimes, taking that interdisciplinary approach helps students to learn more and synthesize that knowledge more deeply. So, like taking maybe a historical approach to physics or a philosophical approach to math or those kinds of things where you combine different disciplines and see how the different disciplines relate. Because ultimately, knowledge is just one unified entity. They're just different parts of it, but they all interact somehow.
Love the advice. Thank you very much.
Trustee, let me do trustee Laura Smith Everett first.
Can you hear me now?
Sort of.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Caitlin, thank you so much for coming to our meeting. I'm sorry that I'm not there in person tonight. I would love to know more about your two experiences as an online student and as an in-person student and whether you found any differences that you were not expecting.
I think one of the interesting things is that the online environment doesn't necessarily mean you don't learn as much. I found that the online environment gave me the opportunity to learn independently and take kind of like a reinforcement method to my learning. So, learning how to study something on my own first and then come to class and then study it again and then maybe study it again on my own has kind of been the nice thing about online learning, that you kind of have that push, like you need to learn on your own because if you just relied on the instruction during the online lectures, it's kind of harder to understand the material deeply. And I think having to teach myself how to learn during that online environment helped me to be more successful in my in-person classes.
Thank you. We appreciate having you here today.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Smith Everett. Trustee Kostin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for being here, Caitlin. I know you must be so proud of your accomplishments and so are we. I wonder if you might just think a little bit about some of the challenges that you think this institution faces in the years going ahead, things that you might have encountered that you could have said, boy, if this had been done a little differently, or perhaps if I were in charge of the world, I might change this or that. What do you see as our biggest challenges?
I think one of the biggest challenges with education, I actually did write a paper about it in my English Composition Honors class, is the fine balance that students need to take when viewing the issue of grades. Grades are a number and they definitely do have a lot of say in, let's say, what schools you can get into, what classes you can take next semester, maybe what even, you know, what kinds of jobs you can get. And a lot of times then, students lose sight of learning and just focus on those grades. And sometimes that even leads to things like academic dishonesty or just doing assignments just for the sake of getting them done and over with without actually learning. And I know that it's a very deep and complex problem that will probably take a lot of work to solve, but I think it's something that we can possibly work towards.
Thank you. That's terrific insight. Thank you.
Anybody else? Trustee Rutan.
I think you mentioned that you are the product of immigrant parents. How has that influenced your approach to learning or your perspective on education?
So, my parents, they immigrated from the Philippines several years ago. And I think just the challenge of living in a third world country and then moving to the United States taught them the importance of hard work and education. My dad did pursue further education when he moved here. And since then, he has been a very hard worker. And I think that that set an example for me, that good things come to those who work hard. Of course, a lot of, you know, opportunity definitely plays a role in that, but it's just a matter of taking advantage of whatever opportunities you have available and doing the work to advance in where you want to go. So, I definitely think that education is something that was stressed in our family, that we should value it.
I know your parents are very proud of you.
Thank you.
If I, are you finished? Sorry.
Yes, I'm finished.
Caitlin, thank you for being here. I happen to be an attorney and a civil litigator who has focused on environmental law and toxic torts. And I have to tell you, I'm thrilled to hear you say that about ecology. As my third year of law school, I had a lot of friends in my section and in school that wanted to take labor law. And I said no, because I had practiced at a labor firm and I didn't quite like it. And then I took environmental law and I saw it as the intersection of law and politics, science and math, all for the public good. And then, you're struggling with concepts like how much pollution is okay, you know, what can we live with? And the philosophical approaches to all of that and that, you know, Europe had to adopt a completely foreign math structure in order to better understand math. I think those were all key concepts and I'm thrilled to hear you say that. One final story while I have you, and I'm thrilled to hear you say you're going to KU and potentially med school. I have a dear friend who is a dentist that left New Orleans on Sunday night and missed the national championship game because he had to go back and see about 100 patients in Northwest Ohio. So, he had to make that commitment because being a doctor was more important than being at that game. I can't get that out of my head. I just wanted to share that with you as a potential Jayhawk, that we're out there and we care a lot about that team and our teams in Kansas. But I'm very much thrilled to meet you and thank you for being here. Good luck.
Thank you for having me.
You're welcome. All right. The next item on our agenda is the open forum segment. The open forum is an agenda item at each regularly scheduled board meeting. Speakers wanting to make a public comment via Zoom webinar must register by completing the registration form by 5:00 PM the day before the scheduled Board of Trustees meeting. Speakers must provide their name, city of residence, name of any group they are representing, the topic of discussion, and a brief one or two sentence summary of the presentation, as well as the email address and phone number the speaker will be using to access Zoom. The Zoom link and conference number will be listed in the JCCC Board of Trustees Meetings page and registered speakers should be familiar with Zoom before logging into the Board of Trustees meeting. And registered speakers should wait until called upon by the chair to speak, at which time the recognized speaker will be granted electronic access to the board. Speakers wanting to make in-person comments must register through this form by 5:00 PM the day before or in-person 15 minutes before the start of the meeting outside this room, GEB 137. Each registered speaker is allotted five minutes to speak. If there is a significant number of registered speakers at this time, the time will be reduced for each registered speaker, subject to the discretion of the chair. When addressing the board, registered speakers should be respectful and civil and encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. Personal insults, profanity, or language that is not appropriate to be aired live on television, and offensive comments based on protected status or class are prohibited. Again, the chair of the board has the authority to keep, order, and impose reasonable restrictions on any disruptive behavior of those participating in the board meeting. So, we thank anybody for their interest in this process. And I forget how many people we have here this evening. We have nobody this evening. So, nevertheless, I still feel compelled to read all that. I'm sorry to take the time to do it, but having lived through, say, the track situation, I want to make sure everyone is clear that they have the opportunity to come speak to this board. So, thank you for your interest. The next item on our agenda is board reports. The first report is the Student Senate Report by Ms. Shelby Winter. Come on up to the podium. Dr. Brown is better at saying that than I am.
Hello, I'm Shelby Winter, the outgoing Student Senate President, but I wanted to bring the incoming Student Senate President for next year, Daniel Gonzalez, to present part of the Student Senate Report.
Thank you, Shelby. Daniel?
Hello, my name is Daniel Gonzalez and I'm the incoming Student Senate President. So, some updates for Student Senate this year. Student Senate finished the year strong with a successful Student Senate reelection period. And they had a spring formal fundraiser. Here are some Student Senate specific updates. Shelby Winter, the current Student Senate President, Astha Thapa, Vice President of Student Senate, and Mahalat Mulugeda, parliamentarian, are all graduating this year. Shelby will be attending UMKC in the fall. Astha will be attending KU in the fall. And Mahalat will be attending Mizzou.
And then I wanted to talk about the Student Senate Executive Board for 2022 to 2023. President Daniel Gonzalez will be leading. Vice President Maria Politzuelos, treasurer will be Carson Couch, parliamentarian David Omwenga, and Secretary Deborah Wyremu. As for the spring formal, the spring formal was a huge success. $2,635 were raised for Della Lamb to assist with refugees transitioning to the Kansas City area. And over 200 JCCC students and guests attended the event held in Calm Dining. We just wanted to thank you so much for working with Student Senate this past year.
Thank you.
I also look forward to working with you all next year with, as the incoming Student Senate President.
Well, you're the best part about our school and we thank you for being here. Do you have anything else before I open it up to questions from our trustees? I don't, I don't think they'll have any, but.
We're ready for any questions.
Any questions for our students? If I, go ahead.
Well, I will ask and I'll challenge Daniel, I guess, that next year, we need to be, to get our Student Senate leadership strong enough to get, go to K-State. I mean, I know UMKC, KU, and Mizzou are good, but no. Congratulations, Shelby. You've done a great job and we welcome Daniel, but we will miss you. We've always enjoyed our Student Senate Presidents and the updates from students. So, good luck and I hope we see you at graduation.
I hope you do.
Daniel, if I may, anybody else have any questions?
I do.
Trustee Rutan.
Have you developed a couple of goals that you like to pursue during your time as a leader?
That's my time in Student Senate. Well, I do have a couple of goals. Right now, we're having a lot of, as we're getting out of COVID, we're having a lot of trouble with clubs being, getting involved back in with the Student Senate. So, that's going to be one of my main goals. And I'm trying to, even this year, we were trying to do a lot, a lot more outreach and especially as Shelby had difficulty starting the year with basically no new student senators. So, that's going to be our top priority is to get more student involvement within the school.
Thank you.
Trustee Smith Everett.
Sorry, a little bit of a delay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Daniel, welcome to the firing squad, also known as the boy. No, that's, I just wanted you to feel the heat for just like five seconds. We really aren't that bad. But I want to thank you so much for, sorry, I can hear the feedback in the room and it's a little distracting. Thank you so much for stepping up to be a leader. Your role is really important because some months, you're the only students we get to hear from directly. And that's a really critical role. And so, thank you for taking that position. We look forward to hearing from you more next year.
Thank you.
Trustee Smith Everett, the only feedback I heard was, we're sure glad to have you participate in any manner we can get you. So, thank you. Anybody else? Any questions for the students? And Daniel, is that, that's the band or is that a Marvel character?
This is Slayer, sure.
Is it, is it the Slayer Band or I?
Slayer Band. I'm sorry, I just came from finals. I haven't prepared myself.
My kid got me into Marvel and so, like, I'm always stunned at what is or what is not. Like, Men in Black is a Marvel comic. Sorry, I just take a look.
No, it's all right.
I appreciate the eye rolls in the room like this. Anybody else have any questions for the students?
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelby. Next, next item on the agenda is the College Lobbyist Report by Mr. Dick Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me give a little bit of report on the veto session that occurred recently. It lasted one week, but it's not over yet. Typically, following the veto session, the legislature adjourns to a date certain, which they call signe die, which signals the formal closure of the legislature. And that has not yet occurred. Legislators will return on May 23 to address what is anticipated to be the court's response to the congressional and state district maps. The Kansas Supreme Court has indicated that it will hear arguments on May 16. I'm not certain that they will be able to issue an opinion, formal, informal, or otherwise, in a week's time. Yet, we have the legislature returning on the 23rd to address anything that may come as a result of court action on the maps. Six of the seven higher-profile vetoes were sustained. That means they did not meet muster to be overridden by the legislature. In some cases, one body would override a measure and the other one didn't. Only food assistance for state aid was overridden by the House and Senate. That was a bill that was vetoed by the governor. Many of the higher-profile bills, which were vetoed, will be used in postcards for votes during the campaign season. But we're not sure when that campaign season is going to actually kick off because legislators can't campaign until, and this year, the House is up, they cannot campaign until following signe die or the formal closure of the legislative session. During this same timeframe, speaking of the veto session, legislators were trying to grasp what the consensus revenue estimates meant. There was an upward adjustment of $340 million that the state is anticipated to receive before the year's fiscal end, the fiscal year end, which is June 30 of this year. So, keep in mind, we already had adjusted numbers in November that were up, April numbers were up. Then, come the end of April, April 30th month end numbers were up another $170 million. That's after the adjusted amount that the consensus revenue estimating group did in mid-April. So, money continues to roll in. It continues to be fodder for the topic of tax reductions. Not sure if that will happen when legislators come back on the 23rd. Several significant tax reduction bills have already passed and have been signed by the governor. The most recent one was food sales tax reduction. It's sort of a slider, if you will. The first year, it'll go from 6.5% to 4%. The next year, it'll go to 2%. And in the third year, food sales tax from the state sales tax portion will go to 0%. That all begins in January of 2023. So, we'll see what happens when legislators come back on the 23rd. It certainly will provide some information for them to, to at least react to. We're hearing they only want to be here a day when they come back on the 23rd. We're hearing other things too, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. The Senate Education Conference Committee, or rather, the Education Conference Committee Report passed as part of the veto session agenda. Included in that Conference Committee Report were amendments or changes to the college promise legislation, which we had talked about earlier in the, in the session. The Board of Regents was given some additional authority to exclude programs that they deem do not meet the high wage, high demand, or high pay categories. And it also allows institutions to appeal such action by the Board of Regents. And we're going to see that occur across several of the community college institutions where the Board of Regents is challenging some of the programs offered through college programs, promise, rather. Also included in the Education Conference Committee Report were amendments to the Johnson County Education Research Authority, Triangle Authority, to allow K-State, Olathe, to have a broader scope for what is allowed to be offered at that location. And the college played a pivotal role for that, for that particular piece of legislation to, to move forward and how it was crafted. When the legislature met after first adjournment, it forwarded to the governor a bill related to emergency management. That bill was vetoed back in, in mid-April. No attempts were made to override that veto, but during the veto session, the legislature passed another emergency management-type bill that would prohibit, among other things, any unit of government from issuing a mask mandate in response to an infectious disease outbreak. We anticipate that the governor will, will veto that bill as well. If she does not, those provisions will apply at the college. The Committee on Legislative Post- Audit, so we have a division of Legislative Post-Audit. It has a committee. It has an entire staff. It's sort of a quasi-state agency, but they serve the legislature. That group met in, at the end of April during the veto session and approved an audit on athletic programs at community colleges. The audit will focus in three general areas: amounts spent on community college athletic programs in recent years and the source of the funds, the percentage of community college athletes that came from outside of the community college service area in the last 10 years. And then, the third focus area is how many community college athletes received scholarships in the last 10 years and where were those athletes from. So, a little bit of a crossover from the second question. This is an ongoing personal quest that comes from Representative Christie Williams. She serves on the Legislative Post-Audit Committee. And, and this has been an issue that she has been following and, and bird-dogging for the last three, four, or five years. We now have a post-audit dealing with this. It's a little bit more than just a simple audit. They'll devote the time of three post-auditors. They're employees that work for post-audit. And I think the anticipation is that the audit will take approximately four months to complete. So, we will be responding to some of those inquiries most likely. I think they will take a selection of community colleges. We typically get swept up in a selection of community colleges simply because we're a little bit different than, than some of the other community colleges across the state. So, we'll see what, what that produces. Now, I will say that the Legislative Post-Audit Committee has become sort of the go-to committee if you have a specific or personal issue. In January of this year, you may recall that I reported on a Legislative Post-Audit finding having to do with government competition with private entities, specifically daycare and some of the other things that sort of resulted out of the past couple of years of discussions related to fitness facilities. And that audit found that there was no competition, whereupon several who requested the audit immediately challenged it and said that the auditors were wrong. So, we have a tool that's available to a specific group of people to track something that, that they either have a problem with or want, want to dig deeper into after maybe several attempts at the legislative level. This is just another tool that exists. So, we'll see again what unfolds with that particular, with that particular subject matter. There were a number of other audits that were approved at that meeting too, which was a little surprising during an election year. It's unclear if legislators will have much to deal with when they come back on the 23rd. Again, with the court just having heard arguments, they could issue a summary opinion or a, or a brief indication of where they intend to go without issuing the formal opinion. That, you know, I guess I would want to see the formal opinion before I start making legislation as it relates to maps. I think the state maps are going to be fine. That means the Senate districts and the House districts that comprise the 125 House members and the 40 Senate members. I think the education, the State Board of Education map will be okay as well. That's all contained in one, one product that was sent to, that was sent to the governor. She signed the bill, but it goes for an immediate challenge by the court. When you say immediate, obviously, we're, here we are a month or so later, actually looking at what those maps look like. I think the real challenge will be the congressional map. That, that plays out in really the third district and the second district, the way those two districts were, were drawn. We'll see what happens or we'll see what the court decides. There's really no indication but, what way the court is leaning on that. And they're very good about sort of holding that close to the vest. So, we're hearing that legislators might come back on the 23rd if they don't have anything to do. We're hearing that they may have another rolling veto date, meaning- We're hearing that they may have another rolling veto date, meaning that we'll come back in another week or another two weeks on an attempt to address anything related to the map. Also, anytime they're in Topeka, it's anybody's game, it's up for shenanigans. So when there's idle time, strange things can happen. So we're keeping a close eye on that as well. So I think, Mr. Chair, I think I would stop there. That kind of gives you an idea of what's occurred over the past month or so, and kind of the direction that we're going into the closure of the formal legislative session.
Thank you, Mr. Carter, and thank you for all your work. I know you have several clients, but we sure appreciate you and what you do. Any questions for Mr. Carter? Trustee?
Dick, has there been discussion about extending the filing deadline, which I believe is June 1st at noon? If the legislature is only going to act the earliest on May 23rd on maybe revising any districts, particularly the congressional districts?
Yeah, thanks for the question. There has been a discussion about that. The filing deadline has been extended for Kansas House of Representative candidates, as well as congressional candidates, to June 15. All other candidates, meaning statewide office holders, so that's the governor, the Attorney General, Secretary of State, Insurance Commissioner, State Treasurer, they will still all abide by the June 1 date. And if there are any county or local, I don't think there's any local elections, but if there's any county races that are up, those will also be June 1. I think that, again, it's a great question. Will they have an answer by June 15? I hope so. We're seeing a repeat of 2012 in a little bit different fashion kind of unfolding.
This is not really a question, Mr. Chair, and maybe Trustee Ingram can help on this, but I would like to have us, as a college, keep track of how much time is spent answering this audit, which could have been, all of the information could have been achieved, I believe, by a Kansas open records request if somebody actually wanted to say, how many student athletes did you have, how many got scholarships, and where were they from? I don't know if the FERPA applies to that. But I'd like to keep track of what we spend answering a request, which I think is driven by one member of the legislature and may not be worth our time. And then maybe if the other community colleges in the state would do the same. They have three auditors and four months to complete it. This data is readily available.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but for a question, who did request it? I missed it?
Representative Christie Williams from Butler County, Eldorado area.
Our old friend.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just, I'd missed, and I do concur. Any other questions for Mr. Carter? I have some, if you, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Carter, remind me when that audit begins? I know it's-
I don't know that a date has been established for the beginning of the audit, just that we know that it'll likely take four months. I don't think that there's been a signal as to when it will start yet. We can look into that, and I can see if I can find out. I know that they have a number of other audits that they're scheduling, and so I think, depending on what their workload looks like and how that all plays out, that determines when it begins. So I think it'll begin with a series of email requests for information. And again, Trustee Musel made some comments that weren't out of line. I think we've already provided a lot of this information in the past when there have been some legislative requests from the Legislative Research Department. This is not a new issue. And so we have the information, and it will take some staff time to compile and to send back. But to answer your specific question of when will it start, we don't know.
Could I also ask, you mentioned, and this is just really more about educating us, that it was unusual that we would have these requests in an election year? Why is that?
Well, typically during an election year, there's not a lot of interim activity, interim committee activities. So the topics that we'll be talking about over at the legislature during the summer months and fall months, and so something like this also kind of falls into that same category as far as not having a large workload when legislators are out campaigning.
Thank you.
This is an election year only for the House. The Senate still stands for another two years.
Thank you.
Anybody else? And I have several questions I'd like to ask. So we're using legislative post audit to compile all this data and information so that somebody can make bar charts and graphs to understand better this information?
Right, and then that post audit will go in the list of all the post audits that have been completed. Typically, they can be used to make better legislation or make better policy. A lot of post audits just sit on the shelf.
Well, I can be refined, I sometimes choose not to be. So, I mean, what's this about? Does she just have a beef with Butler County Community College, or is there some?
It goes back several years to a student that was in Butler County and maybe played football and maybe had, I don't know if there were scholarship issues at question, but I think it goes back several years and has been something we've been dealing with in the legislative committee process for three or four years.
I thank you, Mr. Carter. A few other things, just quickly, the critical role JCC played in helping K-State Olathe achieve a broader authority for offerings, as I understand it. I just wanted to thank you. I know Heather Meyer had a role over, Heather Morgan, Meyer, excuse me. Heather Morgan had a role, our executive director at KCT. Senator Baumgartner, and also our very own Trustee Ingram, I know, had a role.
Trustee Musel.
Trustee Musel. Were you breaking legs? Was it, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, too. The next item I had was, I had some questions on legislative post audit, we covered that. Do you think the Supreme Court might leak their brief on redistricting?
I think things are a little tighter in that operation, and that's an interesting one I've been following. That has, I've never seen anything like that at federal level. So, no, I don't think we'll hear.
No, I appreciate, I just was trying to interject some humor.
It was funny. I laughed.
Any other questions for Mr. Carter? Seeing none, Dick, thank you very much.
Thanks.
And I see, Trustee Smith Everett, are you just waving? You're just waving. Okay, no. Next item on our agenda is the Faculty Association Report by their new president, Brett Cooper.
Thank you, Trustee Cross. Good evening, everyone. Allow me to briefly introduce myself. My name is Brett Cooper. My day job here at the college is as Director of the Math Resource Center. With its mix of working with students one-on-one and a bit of administrative duties as well, it is my dream job. I am happy to be here at the college and intend to stay until retirement. I'm a Johnson County native and the product of the College Now program. I have a BScD in secondary education and an MA in mathematics, both from the University of Kansas. So, no K-State here.
Man, you're like one-third the volume of Jim Liker, so.
Well, he did, last month's gathering, say that I am a bit soft-spoken compared to him, so I just don't want to turn him into a liar. Although I'll be addressing you most months here, I do want to mention the team that I have backing me up. It's Associate Professor Andrea View in Political Sciences, Vice President, Professor Dave Krug from Accounting as Treasurer, Professor Jessica Tipton from the Library as Secretary, Associate Professor Amanda Glass in Chemistry as our Uniserve representative, and of course, Professor Jim Liker from History as our immediate past president. Right now, scores of full-time and part-time faculty are sitting in their homes, offices, their favorite hangouts, grading, and final exams, papers, projects, and portfolios. These summative assessments provide a time for students to show the breadth and depth of what they've learned over the semester, as well as providing faculty a time of reflection on what went well, what didn't go so well, and the things that they want to change for the next iteration of the classes that they teach. Teachers begin their review of lessons and reflect on student learning well before the end of the semester. Reflection is an integral part of our profession, and it's an ongoing endeavor. Although reflection is largely a personal enterprise, many of our faculty share what they've learned through reflection with their colleagues. They can do this in a variety of ways, including conference presentations, publications, or even working with the faculty office of development. In response to very well-attended PDD workshop, Associate Professor Megan Doyle and Assistant Professor Craig Butler worked with the Faculty Development Office to create a monthly Faculty Roundtable called Beg, Borrow, and Steal. At these sessions, faculty lead a discussion on a chosen topic with the intent of sharing with their colleagues some different classroom practices that they found to be helpful to their students. These roundtable sessions are well-attended, with 15 to 30 full-time and part-time faculty attending each month. This is just one example of how our faculty use each other's expertise to improve their own practice and build a community of educators. Another example of how our faculty work together to improve student learning is the peer review process. Full-time faculty who are in their second and third year at the college take part in this process. The goals of peer review, as stated in the Peer Review Handbook, are to foster cooperation leading to excellence of the faculty of JCC, to promote collaboration through instructional, collegial, and professional support, and to provide experienced faculty members a voice in faculty employment decisions. This process is a great learning experience for all involved. New faculty are brought into the culture of the college, learn effective strategies, and get to hear some student feedback through their peer review panel, while experienced faculty are exposed to new ideas from their new faculty who bring a fresh perspective. Peer review is a powerful tool, but it need not be limited to faculty in their second and third years. As the Faculty Association and administration take part in a joint task force to update our faculty evaluation tools, the FA believes that peer review could be an important tool to use for those faculty who are having trouble meeting the college's expectations. As deans are not necessarily experts in the various departments that they oversee, it may be beneficial to bring in support of subject matter experts to help the struggling faculty member build their skill set and improve student learning. Last Friday, the trustees, cabinet, and the FA Executive Council all received an email from retired Vice President of Human Resources Becky Centlever, providing some background and context of the verb benefit. As the administration is recommending to the trustees to sunset the benefit next year, this information is critical in making that decision. In her email, Miss Centlever points out that there has been a health retirement benefit for 28 of the last 32 years. That marks the majority of the college's 53 years of existence. If this plan is allowed to go forward as recommended, we face a potential mass retirement of senior faculty next year. As Dr. Liker pointed out at last month's board meeting, some departments could lose all but one or two faculty members, leaving only probationary faculty who would not have access to appropriate mentoring, institutional knowledge, or critical support from having a supportive department. Sunsetting verb does not have to be an all-or-nothing proposition. You have the option of phasing it out over two or three years, which would alleviate some of these challenges. Either way, we are entering an anomalous time of potentially not having a health retirement benefit. I urge the administration to bring together a cross-section of employees to research options for a more sustainable health retirement benefit to offer once verb is sunset, whenever that may be. Thank you for your time.
Any questions for Professor Cooper? Trustees Musel?
Brett, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
I love the big borrow-and-steal lunch idea and the collaboration you talked about. I've always been interested in when somebody comes back with a sabbatical, they make a presentation, and now we have it available online, I think.
Right.
And we're trying to consolidate that so trustees can watch it. But how often, how do those get transmitted or transferred to the faculty to utilize, whether in the department of that person or somebody else? Is there a formal way that you share those among the faculty?
Many people, when they come back, in fact, I believe most, give presentations during the professional development days specifically to their divisions, as most of their work is related to their colleagues in the division. Other methods, as I mentioned earlier, conference presentations and publications, which are available to all. But also, we have to remember that they present their results to the board. Now, I believe the committee of the whole is where that's happening.
It's a separate event.
It's a separate event, all right, yeah. But I believe that's recorded, and their colleagues can always access that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Brett?
Just welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Do a good job.
I will do my best.
Do a good job, do it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
The next item on our agenda is the Johnson County Education Education Research Triangle Report by Trustee Musel.
Thank you, Chair Cross. The JCert Board met on Monday, April 25th, at the K-State Olathe campus. It was my first meeting since I have been named liaison from the board, succeeding Lee in that role. Discussion topics included reports from the representatives of all three campuses, the KU Cancer Center, KU Edwards, and K-State Olathe. We had the opportunity to hear from the new K-State president, Dr. Richard Linton, who has committed to a more active role in the Kansas City area and in Johnson County. So we hope to see him down here. And it dovetails with the efforts that, Lee, you mentioned about the legislative changes to give K-State a little wider runway to accomplish things at the K-State Olathe campus. We also had a report from our outside auditor and approved the audit scope and proposals for fiscal year 2021. We took a report on the website. The website is www.jocotriangle.com. It's very difficult to find. We learned that with help from the Johnson County Government's IT Department, that the way search engines work, and that they simply weren't identifying if you searched for Johnson County Research Triangle, or JCert, or whatever, if you were good enough, you would come up with one of the three campuses, and you could link it then to the main website.
That's how I did it. I always did it through Edwards.
Yeah, so we're working on that and believe that may be solved, but we also agreed that we would, we approved expenditures to reserve jcert.org and jcert.com as alternatives so that those domains are protected in case the fix doesn't really allow you to search, because we want more people to have more access to the minutes, the financial reports, other things, since this is approaching a $20 million a year deal for Johnson County taxpayers. We had a report at the stage that time of the legislative changes to the K-State Olathe authority, and Senator Dinah Sykes is on the commission and reported on where that was and got some direction from the JCert Board. As I understand, the legislation that finally passed, any new programs by K-State Olathe would have to be approved by the JCert Board, with the notion that they not be duplicative of either existing baccalaureate or postgraduate programs that KU offers, or duplicative of any of the programs that we offer at Johnson County Community College, so that truly it would be complementary and build on things like we've done with KU Edwards with the 2+2 program. So I think that was all good. Year-to-date revenues are up 18.3% over last year's sales tax revenues. Inflation obviously plays a role in that. Things cost more, sales tax goes up, too. April of 2022 was up 12.1% over April of 2021. Our next meeting is Halloween, October 31st, I think at KU Edwards. That's my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any questions for Trustee Musel? Greg, with respect to the 18.3%, what role do you think Palladium played in that?
What role, what?
I'm glad they're redoing the website, I'm glad to hear that. I did have a question, the courses at K-State Olathe, so what does that mean? Do you think more agricultural offerings, or?
There can be more graduate offerings or baccalaureate offerings that are maybe in some of the science or industrial engineering or other programs that KU doesn't offer. And right now, they're restricted to food security, food safety and biosecurity, and that's such a narrow focus, and it was graduate-only, that it's proven very difficult to get those off the ground on any kind of scale. So allowing them to do some things that K-State does well, that is not duplicative, is what the goal of that has been.
I have to say, for what it's worth, in my two cents, I had rather hoped they'd have broader authority than that. I mean, just from a competition standpoint, and not to be duplicative, I know the state generally has a policy in its history works to avoid that, but if that's worth anything to you.
I think it's a step in the right direction, and KU, both KU campuses supported it, as did the chancellor, and so I think if it's just the first step, that's one thing, but it's a step that had to be taken, and everybody agreed to that.
I agree.
When do they think that that will, excuse me, when do they think that that will begin? I mean, you don't need until October.
Well, July 1st, the legislation, I believe, will go into effect. K-State Olathe also has a new CEO, Ben Wolf, who was at the KU Edwards campus for the last number of years, previous to that, he was at Metropolitan Community- Previous to that, he was at Metropolitan Community College. Ben helped David Cook out, Dr. David Cook, stand up a number of new programs, master's programs and other programs. At KU Edwards, he knows the Kansas City market. He's not exactly a land-grant person, but I think he will be very good at helping K-State figure out where those gaps are and how to fill them. And I don't know how fast it will. It's a process to get through the Board of Regents, once you come up with the policy and the program. And the JCert Board agrees to go forward, it's got to go through the Board of Regents, which is a six-to-nine-month process. So this won't be an overnight deal, but it's critical so that K-State can take advantage of the funding that Johnson County taxpayers are offering.
Thank you.
I must say, Mr. Chair, you know, Bill Self wasn't exactly from Dean Smith's tree either, but then we found him on a Larry Brown branch and took him. So just because he's not a land-grant person doesn't mean.
I think, Ben Wolf is going to be a great addition to K-State's campus.
We congratulate him, and thank you for your report. The next item on the agenda is the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, brought to us by Trustee Ingram.
Yes, thank you very much. My report is extremely short this month. We have spent a lot of time and effort amongst all 19 community colleges in working collaboratively on the review for our executive director, Heather Morgan. So we will be sharing that with her later on this month. Our next meeting, however, will be June 3rd and 4th, and that will be held at Colby Community College. So we will be in Colby. And that concludes my report.
I love Colby. Thank you for your report, Trustee Ingram. The next item on our agenda is the Foundation Report by Trustee Ratan.
Good evening, everyone. The most recent Foundation meetings that we've had were the Foundation Investment Committee. They met on April 26, and that included a special presentation by Jay Antle on ESG investing. ESG stands for environmental, social, and governance investing. The Foundation Board of Directors met on Wednesday, April 20, and the 2022-2023 Foundation Board slate was approved. Beth McCown, Katie Fitzgerald, and Kurt Saylor were recognized for their service to the Board. Brenda Sharp and Pat McCown were approved as new directors. Upcoming meetings are following. The Foundation Annual Luncheon will happen on May 17, on a Tuesday, from 12:00 to 1:00 in the Capitol Federal Conference Room, and we hope that all trustees will attend. Again, that's May 17, from 12:00 to 1:00 p.m., Capitol Federal Conference Room. The Foundation Executive Committee will meet on Tuesday, June 21, 2022. The Foundation is happy to report that they have found an executive director, and her name is Joy Ginsburg. She will be the new executive director for the Johnson County Community College Foundation beginning July 1. She was unanimously approved by the Foundation Executive Committee, Hiring Committee, and the Foundation staff. From the press release, Ginsburg brings notable experience to JCCC, most recently with the Blue Valley Educational Foundation, where she served as executive director since 2016. Ginsburg surpassed income goals for every fundraising event every year, grew the endowment to nearly $5 million, and managed a strong local board and team of volunteers. She brought new ideas to the organization, such as BV Well, which offered more than 40 mental health awareness events to the Blue Valley community in the last four years. Prior to BV EF, Ginsburg worked for 18 years in leadership positions with the American Cancer Society. We welcome Joy to JCCC. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Ratan, and congratulations to Joy Ginsburg. She's done good work at the Blue Valley Education Foundation, and I feel like I met her, but I'm not sure, so I should do that.
She's awesome.
As Trustee Ingram says. Any questions for Trustee Ratan? Seeing none, we will move on to the next item on our agenda is committee reports and recommendations. The first item is collegial steering. We did not meet this month, although Trustee Ingram had a good idea that all the officers should join us at collegial steering in the fall. And are we meeting in June? No, that lead balloon went down.
Yeah.
So there was no meeting this month, and therefore I have no report, which concludes my report, which takes us to the Committee of the Whole. Trustee Smith Everett, are you doing that, or am I?
Mr. Chairman, can you see me now?
Yes.
I am prepared to give the report. I will be leaving at 7:00 for my daughter's honors award ceremony, so I think that that time should allow for me to present the report, if that's okay with you.
Yes, ma'am. Barring Armageddon, I think we should be able to accomplish that.
Hoping also for no Armageddon. Thank you.
People think I'm kidding.
Should I begin?
Yes, ma'am. Please do so.
All right. The Committee of the Whole meeting was held by Zoom webinar format at 8:30 a.m. on Monday, April 25, with Dr. Bound, trustees Cross, Ingram, Smith, Everett, Hamel, and Ratan in attendance, and Joy Coast joining subsequently, and Trustee Musel subsequently later. We covered the strategic planning, employee engagement. An update was presented on the development of the strategic planning goal number four, employee engagement, which the presenters covered the importance of encouraging employee growth, a strategy to create and maintain an environment where employees are valued and belong, the approach for JCCC to develop a consistent culture of accountability, integrity, and equity. And the fourth bullet point of their presentation was about the approach for meeting each strategy with metrics and benchmarks were applicable and next steps. We also got a presentation from Dr. Leslie Harden, Vice President of Human Resources, who provided a compensation overview that included information on wage growth, consumer price index, unemployment numbers, and salary increases. Research shows that since the pandemic, there has been a shift in what employees want from their employers. Almost 11% of employees who have left JCCC did so because of the compensation. So JCCC, as Dr. Harden presented, must assess current programs to determine if we are meeting the needs of the students and employees. The Board of Trustees voted to approve a compensation plan in November 2021. That plan allows for transparency, clarity, and consistency in our compensation decisions. The compensation plan does not apply to bargaining unit employees, president, adjunct, or other similarly situated positions. Changes to note on the updated compensation plan include replacing the current pay level table with a new revised table that begins at a $15 an hour minimum, clarifies when market adjustments are appropriate, clarifies eligible employees for shift differential, callback and on-call pay, adds language about timing for shift differential, general language cleanup, and update plan that will take effect, updated plan that will take effect July 1 of this year, 2022. It is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept that recommendation of the college administration to approve changes to the compensation as presented. And I can go ahead and make that motion.
The motion has been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been moved by Trustee Smith Everett and seconded by Trustee Ratan. Any discussion?
I believe, let me just double-check. This is just a compensation plan, so this is not the verb sunset, just to clarify for board members.
I see Trustee Hamel first, and then Trustee Ingram has a question. Trustee Hamel, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much. I do have a question, and again, I am definitely in favor of raising our wages, and I am questioning if it's exactly the right amount, and I would like a little bit more conversation on there. But my biggest concern is, what about the people that are making 15, 50 now, or 16 now? Are they going to see a bump from this as well, or not?
Vice President Leslie Harden has approached the podium.
Yes, hi. Thank you. Yes, we did account for internal equity adjustments for those four pay levels that are being impacted. So in the budget that Rachel Lear's has presented includes the $15 plus adjustments for those pay grades, one through four.
Okay, so the people that have gotten here, and they worked here for 10 years, now are making 15 or 16, they're going to be compensated more, and they're not going to feel slighted by other people that just show up making 15?
That's correct. We did an analysis for internal equity.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything further, Trustee Hamel?
No, that was it.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'm going to go to Trustee Musel next.
Okay. I had to, and I'll preface this by saying, the next item on the agenda has created some anxiety and agitation on sunsetting the verb program, the voluntary employee retirement benefit program. So because of that, I'm going to ask a few more questions about the comp plan, because it's another relatively complex piece of our compensation plan that I can look through the tables, I don't understand it, I can't tell where somebody fits in.
I concur.
So I guess, and I know it's been out there for a while, but you talked, the internal equity for the four pay levels that get compressed because of the $15 thing, what are, my understanding is the pay table, there are going to be adjustments upward in that area as well, limiting, reducing the number of tiers we have, if you will, but is there an internal equity analysis of those as well?
So, to not make it too complex, we're not actually changing the level of tiers. What we did is we created the same level of tiers for hourly and exempt employees. So you had like 1 through 10, which was hourly, and then everything above that was salaried folks in our current plan. This plan actually shows either hourly and salary, so we are keeping the same structure, if you will, we're just making it simpler. So that's what I'll say the first time. The other piece of it is, we are constantly watching and monitoring internal equity. We know that there are equity issues currently. We have that now. We've got to really start looking at our compensation program and fixing how things were done in the past. And so this is a way to help us get there. The other piece of this is the career laddering. So career laddering is going to allow us to correct a lot of those internal equities you're talking about as well. So as part of all of this bigger compensation scheme, we have a plan to get there, but we also have to have the financial money to do so.
Let me ask you, for my purposes, and maybe those listening or watching, can you give an example of internal equity and help me understand what career laddering is?
Yeah, so internal equity is not paying everybody the same, and I think there's this historical understanding that everybody should, in the same grade, should be paid the same. That's not entirely true. You have to look at a lot of different factors, market factors, you have to look at years of experience. And previously, JCCC looked at all experience. It didn't matter if you worked at McDonald's and you're coming here to be an IS person. We would give you credit for all of that. Compensation plans are traditionally done by relevant experience, and so we've already changed that, and that's working well, and people are getting great credit there. But you do still get some equity issues there. So equity is not equality, and I think I want to make that clear. And then you asked a second question.
It's really, it sounds to me like it's measuring the things relevant to their job at Johnson County Community College.
Correct. Exactly. That is correct. And so there's this perception that everybody should be paid the same in the same grade, and that's not entirely true. Now, do we think that somebody who has 12 years of experience, and somebody who's in a similar job, has 12 years of experience, should be paid comparable? Absolutely. And those are the things that we've got to start looking at and correcting. But in the past, the old way we did it is we would bring everybody to the same amount, and that creates internal equity issues.
What, career laddering?
Oh, yes. Career laddering was your other question. So career laddering is a way to offer employees a way to progress forward in their career. You may have a strong contributor, somebody who loves what they do, they're really good at it, and they don't want to move up into different positions. Or maybe they do, and they don't know the path to take. So there's two different ways to look at it. Career laddering typically can be seen in one way, such as custodial one, custodial two, custodial three, as people progress. It can also be creating succession planning, and so creating pathways for employees to succession plan on, up, and giving them resources to do so. So staff development, getting them to work with individuals as they progress, and so that is what we're trying to do.
There was a provision in the comp plan about promotions or new hires. How do promotions and new hires fit into the new plan?
They're identical. So we have a 10% difference between our levels, and so if you bring somebody in, basically if you bring somebody as max as they can get as a new hire, and I promote you up, you're going to be making the same, because of the way our table is scheduled.
And I know when we get to the budget, there I think was $2 million in the budget for the internal equity on the budget, the comp plan. Is that, that's for the, from the top position all the way down to the bottom hourly position? That's what's needed next year?
That's a variety of people that we notice immediately compression issues with the $15. So it does go up to a few of the higher levels. It's not going to your directors or executive levels yet. Those are levels that we've got to continue to monitor and continue to work on.
Okay, and just like with verb, the "yet" is what bothers me, is what do we think will happen next year, the year after that, with respect to a budget impact of whatever we need to do up in the upper level?
I will tell you, the $15 has nothing to do with the impact to the internal equity. We have that already, even if we don't do the 15. So if we want to take a stance on equity and looking at that better, then next year in the budget, we would make a proposal to the Board and say, here's where we think we need to go next year. Certainly, we have opportunities in the comp plan that allow us to do market adjustments as necessary and those things, but we would have to budget for that year after year to get it where we need to.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee. Any other discussion on the motion? Trustee Ingram. It was so long, he talked so long.
For me.
I'm kidding.
So basically, as, I was just making some notes, there has been a philosophical difference in how we're approaching this. I mean, from what you said, in the past, we looked at all experience, and we're no longer doing that.
That is correct. We are, I would argue that we are now following best practices in HR.
Okay, okay, and I appreciate hearing that. So theoretically, someone could come in and be making more than their supervisor?
No, not at all.
Not at all?
No, because the supervisor is going to be in a different pay level.
Okay. Well, you mentioned the grades, one through four. How many grades do we have?
Well, currently, we have up to 25. I'm speculating.
And that was the table that we worked on several years ago, and we approved and all of that. I mean, I just feel like.
Correct. We've just collapsed it into one. It's the exact same percentages between grades and everything. We just put hourly and salary together, so you can see both, and it just squishes it, but it's the exact same levels.
Okay, all right. Well, I think that, you know, just the reminder that we worked on that, I have, you know, it was just kind of coming back to me this evening, okay, that was connected to this. I just feel like maybe a little bit of history would have been helpful to that, too. Somehow, the transition of that information just went over my head, so thank you very much. I appreciate that. The one thing that I would like to say, though, before we go any further in the, well, I'll let you get back to the motion. I'm finished.
If I may.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Trustee Hamel, excuse me, I did not see you. Go ahead.
No, you're good. So, and I apologize, I just had people here call me here and conversate with me over the last day, last 24 hours, with a lot of concern over people that are leaving and the new people coming in, making significantly more, and sliding people that have been in here, putting their time in. And I have a lot of concerns and a lot of questions, and again, I just hear this in the last 24 hours, and I really would love to wait and get more conversation on there. I think I've had people say that they've asked for communication and conversation, and have, and have not had that on the campus. Is that, do you know anything about that? And I hate to bring up something I don't know about, but again, I just heard about this.
If I may address that, and then we can turn it over to Dr. Bound and his staff. That's the first I'm hearing of it, Trustee Hamel. I appreciate you raising that concern that you're hearing. Dr. Bound, have you heard anything on that?
No, we've done a number of presentations on campus, including most recently to college council and to staff council. And so the reality is, you know, we're trying to fix the bottom of the pay scale, where we have a very difficult time filling positions, and and there is pretty consistent support for this.
I, that's my understanding. And I know one state just is planning to up their minimum wage to 15 and 1/2, and other states and entities are doing similar things. So I think it's in line with what I see around the country. So, but thank you for sharing your concern, Trustee Hamel. Anything else to add?
May I, I'm trying to make sure, Mark, you're a little muted, so it's a little hard to hear. But I think you're, you're hearing concerns that somebody new comes in, in an equivalent position, but is making more than a current employee who is in the same box?
Correct, correct. And again, I don't know, and I hate to bring up something I haven't had a chance to really dig into. But again, so many people brought this concern to me in the last, you know, 24 hours, and I was ready to fully support this. Again, I know we need to raise our bottom pay scale. I do wonder about exactly how much, but at the same time, my biggest concern is, and I've seen this happen in other places, where we raise our minimum wage, or we raise the price of certain people coming in, and the people that have been there 12 years feel slighted that the person coming in is making just as much as they are now. And they're like, well, what's the point of having my seniority of being here, putting this time in, caring about this place? And I just, I really hope that's not the case. And it sounds like you're putting in all the work to do that, and I understand that. So either, I just have some concern with, people are bringing this up and saying this is what's going to happen.
Vice President Harden?
So the, just to answer the question, I think you might be referring to part-time employees. When we redid our comp plan last year, we, we used to only bring part-time employees at the minimum, so that was all they could get. We started bringing people in based on experience. This new comp plan that we are rolling out today and asking for approval includes the equity adjustments for all those folks that were impacted, but that was a part-time employee issue. That's the only thing that I'm aware of right now.
Thank you, Vice President Harden.
I'll say, one of the examples that was brought up was an executive vice president role in pricing and what's going to happen with that. Again, I don't know the details, and I would, this isn't probably the best place to have all these, you know, try to have this discovery, so. But that's one of the things that was brought up to me.
Trustee Ratan, did you have a question?
Yeah. With regard to the $15 per hour, I just know this is the third time I've heard you and Rachel emphasize that you'll make the appropriate adjustments to pay so that it's equitable. So I just, this is the third time I've heard it.
That's, that's what I've heard.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, if I can comment as well?
Yes, Trustee Smith Everett?
We've had this presentation multiple times.
Exactly.
And this has been, since Dr. Harden was hired, something that she and her team have been working on. And as she has said, both the committee of the whole, and now, this is really to bring up the bottom. It's not going to answer all of the equity problems that the HR staff is aware of, but it worked, it brings the bottom. And then there is going to be a series of, my understanding from what Dr. Harden just said, is probably things we'll need to approve over the next several years to equalize the pay scales. But we're not talking about executive level positions. We're talking about the employees that we have the hardest time filling positions, which is our lowest paying jobs. And I want to remind everybody that at the committee of the whole, they spoke about the Chick-fil-A only being open twice, I believe in the month of April. Somebody needs to correct me, please, feel free to do so, because we didn't have the staff for that. So just to remind everyone of the conversation we had just three weeks ago, there's a lot to learn, and there's a lot about compensation that I will never claim to be an expert about, and it's certainly our responsibility to bring concerns. But it's also part of the trustee's role to trust that staff are addressing it as they promised that they are. And I have full trust in Dr. Harden and her team, because I've seen in the year that she's been here, her really chiseling away to make sure we make improvements at every level possible. And with that, Mr. Chair, I would like to call point of order that we vote on the motion on the floor.
Well, first of all, I didn't realize, has it been a year?
For me?
For her?
A year and a half.
Almost a year and a half.
Congratulations. I think, I think Dr. Bound has something.
I would say, Trustee Hamel, we can have a conversation offline, so I can better understand the concerns that you're raising. So, yeah, thank you.
Anything further, Trustee Hamel? Did you have anything else to add, or?
No, thank you, thank you. And I apologize for trying to use some discovery here right now, so.
Okay. Thank you. The motion has been moved, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yea.
Yea.
Yes, yea.
All opposed? I don't hear any opposition. I think it passes unanimously. The next item on our, excuse me, Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you. We will move on to the next part of the presentation. Dr. Harden provided a summary of the JCC voluntary early retirement benefit, which also is, we use the acronym VERB, and the reasoning behind the college administration's recommendation to sunset it. If this is, if this recommendation is approved, JCC is recommending the following options be provided to faculty and staff as outlined in your packet on pages 2 and 3. I will read them for the benefit of everyone who does not have access to that packet. The voluntary early retirement benefit incentive program VERB was established in 2019 with an estimated annual cash spend of $300,000 to $400,000 and sick leave liability of $5 million. The college administration identified a cash spend of approximately three times the original projections and forecast the sick leave liability to increase year over year to over $10 million in the next four years, or in four years. JCC has identified 135 staff and faculty who are eligible to take VERB. These are higher paid positions, and JCC has not had trouble hiring for these positions. Dr. Harden noted, Human Resources has recruiting plans in place to fill up open positions of those that retire. As we switch to a new benefit calendar, JCC has had two enrollment periods, or will have, does have, two enrollment periods this year. The first open enrollment period is happening right now, from June 1, 2022, to December 31, 2022. The second open enrollment will take place in October, from January 1, 2023, to December 31, 2023. With the extra open enrollment period, this is an opportune time to review and assess resources to support staff and faculty who plan to retire. After further discussion, the committee approved to move the following recommendations forward to the board tonight. It is a recommendation of the committee of the whole that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to sunset the voluntary early retirement benefit incentive VERB program effective June 30, 2023. I will make that motion.
The motion has been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
The motion has been moved by Trustee Laura Smith Everett and seconded by Trustee Greg Muzel. Any discussion?
I'll start.
Trustee Muzel.
We know that this is a sensitive topic, and, and as one of the trustees that was here when we adopted this, it's been a period of reflection for me. I've always thought that the board has two primary responsibilities. One is to hire and evaluate, and hopefully not fire, but authority to fire the president. And two, to prepare a budget that lets the college attain its mission in a sustainable fashion. And in 2019, we had a recommendation from the administration, and we had projections that demonstrated this was, this program would be helpful to attracting and retaining talent, and would be sustainable, because the cost would be relatively, well, it would be affordable. It was believed to be sustainable. And the recommendation today is now based on real numbers and data, not projected. And using that data and what we've been provided going forward, three years, we'll be spending $1 million out of operating funds to allow people to retire with that benefit, and we will have to set aside $10 million of reserves that can't be used for anything else. And that was, my concern when we passed this was that at the time, I think we estimated we were going to put $4 million in reserves. It quickly became $6 million, and it's going to grow to $10 million. And that means that the financial actuarial table says, you've got to put that money in a separate account, you can't touch it for anything. We couldn't spend it for science labs, we couldn't spend it for, for anything. And one of the things I thought of today, and I don't want to bring it up, because I'm not sure what the answer is, but if we take $10 million out of our reserves, that's what we should do when we look at our guideline of 25%, 25% of an annual budget in reserves as of December 31. Because that, whatever money is in that reserve is not in our reserve, right? I'm kind of looking at Rachel, but we can't spend that on something. We have to hold that. So I'm not comfortable thinking about putting aside $10 million with the assumption, and the reason we do that is the assumption everybody will take advantage of that in one year. And we'll go retire, and we'll have to put that money in. We know that's not going to happen, but actuarially, we have to plan for it. And when we do that, we're limiting our ability to do other things on campus that I think, that I think are necessary. I was uncomfortable with this when we, when we adopted it, because of the reserve impact. But it was a recommendation of the administration. The projection showed it was affordable. It had the enthusiastic support of everybody on campus, which didn't surprise me, because it was a brand-new benefit. But if I'd known then what I know now, I would have evaluated it, I think, on a different basis. I had an employee talk to me last week, and quoting me from the transcript when we adopted this, about how difficult it is to remove a benefit once you put it in. And I thought that was true at the time. It's, it's certainly striking home to me today that that's true, because people have looked forward to this benefit. Some people have planned their retirement, at least partially around this, and have relied on it, and will be disappointed. But I, you know, the recommendation's been made, I don't think it was hasty or wrong. And if the administration's estimate now is wrong, and we're not able to recruit, attract, retain those people that were going to benefit most from this, and that the data shows the higher level of employees benefited more from it, then a future board can always adopt it. Put it back in, put it in for a year or two years, as we did previously, and address that. I think our, as I mentioned, we have a responsibility to be as fair as we can within a sustainable budget, and as, as difficult as it is, and somewhat troubling to take what everybody thought was permanent, or semi-permanent, or as close to permanent as you can get, and sunset it. That's difficult, but I think it's the right thing to do tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee. Trustee Ratan, then Trustee Smith Everett.
Greg, I agree with you that changing a benefit, even one that we've only had for a couple of years, is difficult and emotional. It feels like a takeaway. I understand how that feels. And a benefit like this is a part of, a great part of a total compensation package. However, if it is, in fact, necessary, the thing that I've asked repeatedly as we discuss this, is that we phase out this benefit over a period of time and soften the blow, whether that's two years or four years. And I also agree that possibly having more involvement leads to more buy-in and understanding the data and the facts. I think that the staff has been very transparent and put forth the data over and over again. But again, having more people involved will, again, get more buy-in. A request I have is, I know that on some of the additional information you put out there, the, what it looks like to do it over four years, can someone bring that up on the screen and show all of that? I don't know if everyone went out there to go pull that information about the four-year transition. If someone could explain that and do a comp trans versus one year. I may have it pulled up, but I can't explain it.
I, I can't pull it up easily.
Yeah, it's a table.
Yeah, I, yeah, I've got it in front of me, but I don't, I, to pull it up.
I don't have it.
I can.
I found it, but I can't find it again.
Well, let me think, while you're talking, let me. For the time being, what is it you'd like to say about it, Madam Trustee?
That I would like to do a phase in-
Okay.
-with a task force, to summarize. And I would like for someone to explain that table to the whole group, so that we all see that information about a phase in and what the impacts are versus a one year.
If, if I could, we have some other questions. Let me move on to those. President Bound, if you're working on that, I just want to give you some time to do it.
Yeah, just keep going.
Okay. Trustee Laura Smith Everett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also, thank you to the magic elves on this side of things. I appreciate them helping with the muting and the hand raising and all the things.
Could we raise the volume?
And the-
Is that possible?
The echo. We're very grateful for you. So I, too, have been debating about this particular issue and have been reading everything. I appreciate, Dr. Bound, you and your team supplying all the information you possibly could, and all the requests. One thing that really struck me about it is that it really is only affecting about 3% of our staff, faculty and staff combined. If, if I'm thinking about something that's really important, an important benefit for all, I want it to be affecting as many retiring faculty and staff as possible. And it really is only 3% at its max, it seemed like, and somebody can correct me if that's wrong. So I, like, Trustee Muzel, have sort of this reluctant but necessary feeling that we've got to do it for the financial implications that it brings. And liability is a big part of the role of trustee that I did not anticipate as a, can I call myself freshman trustee? I like, can we do that, Trustee Muzel or Trustee Cross? I'm going to go with freshman. I still feel like I'm new. But liability is a big issue, and that's part of the fiduciary health of an institution, is realizing how much we have to keep on the books and be mindful of, because at any time, we can be asked to pay for things that we have promised to pay for. And I don't think that I can be okay with a $10 million liability on our books that's benefiting what seems to be the highest wage earners at JCC. And so for that reason, however, along those same lines, I've also been thinking about that this was created to, because it was supposed to be answering a concern that our retirees had, which is that gap between early retirement and being Medicare-eligible. And so I wanted to ask Vice President Harden if we could have a public commitment of some kind of replacement, something that you and your team could work on with a cross-section of faculty and staff that could work to make a more sustainable option, so that we can say to our faculty and staff, we understood, understand that we took this benefit, but we are working on, and you have our commitment for having something to replace it within a reasonable timeline.
Trustee Smith Everett, Dr. Bound has stepped out. I'd like to direct that question to him. Dr. Bound, Trustee Smith Everett has given her opinion and has asked Vice President Harden to do what? I'm sorry, Trustee Smith Everett?
Well, I was just speaking about how we're, what, the appearance that we're taking away a benefit is something I'm not comfortable with, and that we know our early retirees are looking for something to help with their healthcare costs before they're Medicare, Medicare-eligible. And I, this, this current option of VERB is just not sustainable for us financially, but I would like a commitment or some kind of statement that you and your team can put together a cross-sectional representation from the campus to put something in place that would replace it, that is sustainable from a financial standpoint, but also offers that, fits that need for our retirees, in order to sort of feel comfortable about making a vote like this. I'm, I'm wondering if that's reasonable for your team to be able to create something in its place, or make a commitment to do so in a reasonable timeline.
So let me defer to Dr. Bound, and then I can speak after.
So yes, Trustee Smith Everett, Vice President Harden and I have had a number of conversations about this, and, and we are willing and committed to, if that's the board's discretion, to, to research together, to understand what the options are, get the information we need, and to see within a reasonable amount of time, bring back some sort of recommendation, if that's the board's desire.
And I would-
But what I think I heard you say, that is, if the decision was made- But what I think I heard you say, that is, if the decision was made to sunset, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
And I would just add to that, Trustee Smith Everett, that I am committed to working through a process. We would have a year period where we could bring in constituents across campus to talk about what would be sustainable for retirees. And so, I am also committed to doing that.
I appreciate that. That's really important for me, particularly in my decision about this vote, because I don't ever want our faculty and staff to not feel that the years they've dedicated to this institution are for naught, and that we willy-nilly take benefits away. You know, some of those rumblings happened immediately after this was announced, and I want anyone who's listening to know that, from this individual trustee's point of view, that is not the case. And I take this decision with the really heavy weight that it has. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Trustee Smith Everett. And Vice President Harden, I didn't mean to be rude to you at all. I was just, while I enjoy political dissent and disagreement, I still believe in the chain of command, so I wanted to go to Dr. Bound first. But thank you for being there. Any other discussion? Trustee Ingram.
Yes, thank you. And I'm going to piggyback on what Trustee Smith Everett just said, because, you know, we've heard a lot of numbers, but I think for many of us, we see faces. And, you know, as Greg mentioned earlier, we were a part of that decision, and felt like, based upon the numbers that we had seen and heard, that we believed it was sustainable. But one of our previous trustees always kind of enlightened us with, is it sustainable? And I think sometimes we forget about specifically asking that question when we have some of these new things come before us. You know, Trustee Ratan also mentioned the phased-in approach. I know I brought that up when we were in the committee, the whole meeting, also talked about other options. You know, I think that's essentially what we're asking for, is other options. You know, what can we be doing that we haven't talked about? You know, most of the time, when you're presented with something, and maybe something this difficult, you know, there's other options that are out there, or other things to consider, and I just don't feel like I've heard those things. And, you know, Dr. Bound, bless your heart, just a moment ago, you said you would research it with Dr. Harden. And, you know, we're asking for other people's involvement, too, in this. So, you know, that would be my expectation, is that we have other people involved. And, you know, we talk a lot about shared governance, folks. You know, this is a big part of what we're trying to move forward with. So there's just a lot of expectations on my part. I certainly respect the professionals here, but this just touches a lot of people. And as we said, you know, it was something that we gave, and now we're taking it away. I don't want to do that again. I don't want to do that again. We've got to do this differently.
Anything further?
No.
Madam Vice Chair. I have Trustee Hamel, and then Trustee Costa, and I haven't seen, I'm half-blind, so I'm sorry if I've ignored you.
I'm always up here by myself.
Who watch you for?
It's Laura's fault. Trustee Hamel.
Yeah, so honestly, I think this is a pretty good conversation we're having right now. As Greg said, I understand if the numbers are bad, we need to do something. I definitely like saving the college money, but I do have some questions on it, on the viability. There's numbers I've asked for that I've been told no, I could not get a few times. It makes me question. I'd like to know more on that. But the biggest question is, is that we've spent billions of dollars creating this amazing culture at the college. And I know you guys have heard me say this. I don't know if everybody participating has. This is probably one of the absolute best parts of Johnson County Community College, is our professors and the culture we built around that. Again, spending billions of dollars over multiple years, and to save a few million dollars and jump on this thing so quickly and so hastily, I think that's how we got in the mess in the first place. And I just want to make sure we get this right. Again, you know, as Nancy was saying, you know, these are people that have spent a lot of, many, many years invested in this college, and to say, hey, we're going to find something to replace it eventually. And I appreciate that a lot, and that's, you know, it's great to know we talked about that, and thank you, Laura, for bringing that up as well. But I'd rather know exactly what we want to replace it with before we get rid of this. And I know, like, Ratan has brought up, you know, about a phase-out. I'm interested in a phase-out. I'm actually kind of interested in maybe a more long-term phase-out that I'd ask to have looked at. I'm also interested in possibly, what if we change it from, instead of paying out 100% right now, we pay out at 50%, to see if that's feasible, maybe that's sustainable. Maybe we change the rate that we're paying out, not necessarily just cancel it because we can't afford it 100%. I really want to have more discussions on this thing. And again, my biggest part is, if we lose a significant number of our professors and our faculty, our full-time employees that are the mentors, with the new ones coming in, and we already lost a significant number of our employees through COVID, and we can see something like that happen once again, right after the other, that scares me for the future of the college.
Thank you, Trustee Hamel. Does that conclude your comments, discussion?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything further?
Did you have that chart to go over?
I can do that if you're ready.
Do you want to do that, or do you want to say something, Trustee Musel?
I'll clarify a couple points. The reason we're doing it, we need to do it by June 30th, is we have to give a 12-month advance notice as a contractual obligation of our collective bargaining agreement with the faculty union. So I think the public needs to know that. That's why there is a time limit on this, or we have another year of obligation. The second thing is that my support for this is based on our adoption of the mitigating things that are in the next couple of agenda items, the sick leave payout and those other adjustments, which also benefit our employees and our new benefits that weren't available before. And the other thing, I mean, we heard about from, I think from Brad, about Becky Seltiver's email to us as a former HR VP. We have not had this kind of a retirement benefit for a majority of the years. And the reason they got rid of a full-time health plan in order, before you reached 65, back before I got on the board, was because it was clearly unsustainable. You could retire maybe at 55 if you'd been here, and you'd have 10 years of full health coverage, paying nothing into it until you reached Medicare eligibility. So, and even in the prior years, when we did it for a limited period of time, it was a limited period of time, and there was a cap on how many people could take it. So we had some budget control over it. The difficulty with this one is, and I will take the blame for it as part of the trustees, we adopted it, we acted like it was permanent, we put no caps on it, and we relied on projections that turned out to be wrong. I'm interested in the discussion about the phase-out, because the costs continue to rise every year if we phase it out. That may be something we want to do, but it, again, touches the budget issue that we're going to talk about later in this evening's meeting. So that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Musel. Trustee Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to follow up with all of the conversations that has been, that have been going on this evening. This is a really important issue, and we've now really discussed it at least twice, to really try to get our hands around it and to understand. And I truly appreciate the time and effort that the administration has gone through to tease out how we take care of this huge liability that sits on our budget, in our budget. And I think that it is critical that we try to think about the overarching mission, which is to make sure that we financially take care of this institution. That does mean that we take care of the people within this institution, but we also need to make sure that this institution is stable. So hearing from Trustee Musel about the historical context within which all of this has transpired, and then to think about the willingness of the administration to put into place those conversations that need to be had over the next month, to make sure that this is addressed appropriately and in some equitable way for those who might be most affected. Again, it's a small percentage of our population that's affected by this one way or the other. I still feel that it is the right decision to sunset this within the timeline that we have already established. There is no good time to discontinue a program, regardless of how good or bad it has been created. It's, I realize it's going to affect some people at this institution, and I am saddened by that, but it is part of every compensation plan that happens in every organization, in anyone that I've ever served in. Things happen, things change, and it's tough. I do think those conversations for buy-in over the next month or so are incredibly important, so that people understand and listen to. But I really value the transparency and the conversations that we've had as a board, and that we've invited public scrutiny to say, you know, what's going on. I, for one, have only heard from one person within, of the stakeholders in this institution, one way or the other. So it's not like people were beating down a door to, with any kind of great fervency about what was going on here. So I just think for the long-term financial health of this institution, I lean towards terminating the program, as long as the administration can come up with a very practical, reasonable way to get it done.
Did you have anything else to add, Dr. Bound?
No. I'm happy to answer that. Try and walk you through the table if you'd like.
Yeah, I just would like to see the impact of two-year phase-out versus as-is, so we just understand it, or a four-year, whichever data you have.
All right. Could you bring up, yep, I understand. Thank you.
That'll help with my decision.
Feel free to talk amongst yourselves.
Would you like some elevator music? Dooby, dooby wah.
The secret of my success, feel free to talk amongst yourselves. Michael J. Fox. Feel free to talk amongst yourselves.
Thank you, Jason. I appreciate you.
Jason, how long do you need?
About 30 more seconds.
Great. Let me fill that with silence. You can talk about my compensation if you want.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I do want to say that the other parts that we are going to approve after this vote, if this does get approved, is to offer something in the meantime that does give retirees a way to capture the funds that they would normally be able to move into verb. And so, there are options. It is not like it's going away tomorrow. It is sunsetted for the next year, and we have a payout option for people to be able to roll it into an account. They would also continue to add value to their retirement health plan, should they choose to use it for that.
Thank you, Trustee Smith Everett. And, yes.
All right. If you bring up page 4, number 11, and this was on the information I shared with you back on April 21st, earlier this year. Realize this is modeling, right? So I'm not taking the exact, but I'm taking the starting point from what has been provided to you in previous communication with the 279 who are eligible, and 135 who are estimated to benefit, if you will, from the plan. And that was estimated at a $4.8 million payout, and it just carrying forward the liability. And so, it's, this is an estimate based on some modeling. I'm not pulling exact employees and saying, these employees are going to take advantage of it, excuse me, are going to utilize the opportunity and move forward. So what, two of the questions that were raised of, you know, can we phase this out? What would that look like? And can we phase it out, either just leave it as-is at 100% of the benefit that's available, or do you scale it out over multiple years? And so, I know the original request was for 10 years. It took a month of data compilation to model out what we have currently. And so, what we did, what I did then, is I took it and I scaled it back 100%, 80%, 60%, 40% on the top one. That then assumes that if there are 279 people of 135, how many could take advantage of it? What does that look like? Then you back out the 135, and you just start moving your numbers, accounting for those who come into the plan, and those who are utilizing the plan. And then, I just took a level-loaded, the same percentage that was in year one, of the 279 was the 135. I carried that percentage forward just to give us something for consideration. And if you do that, then the payouts are accordingly, again, using average numbers in that, as opposed to trying to calculate who exactly would take advantage of it. The difference between the top and the bottom is, in the original request, to scale back. So if you took it in year one, you get the full benefit. If you waited till year two to take it, it cuts it back by 80%. Year three and year four, you can see that accordingly. Option, no multiplier change, leaving it just at 100%. You pay it out for two years, again, using that same formula from above, you know, the difference in payouts, and, you know, a potential impact on liability. So what happens in the end? This is just, if you take two years or three years, you add up the total number of people who are taking it, and you add up what could be the payout, and that's what that's intended to, at least give you some sense of what that might look like.
Can you pop up the one-year, the same chart for one-year, for like what we have proposed on the table now?
That's year one.
That's, that is it.
Yeah.
So if I'm reading this right, there's really, can you put, leave it back up there? There's really, there's not a huge difference. It's going to cost phase-out.
There's not a significant difference between 80% year two or 100% year two. That doesn't, in my opinion, doesn't produce a big impact, one way or the other, in a budget the size of our budget. You know, it's a $160,000 difference. So, again, this was my best estimate of providing you with something to at least be able to conceptualize what happens if you phase it out.
So over multiple years?
Year one is our liability.
Year liability, year one is where we are to date.
And year one is the most that could happen? Should we give this notice?
No, that's based on modeling 135 taking it.
So the chart would end in that column, and we're done?
If you did a one-year phase-out, it is literally a column that starts 7/1/23. But potentially, all 279 who are eligible could take it. Absolutely. So it's a modeling of, there are people who are eligible that are at different ages and different stages.
Oh, I see.
And it's a, it's a best estimate as to how, which ones might take it, based on their station in life at the college, is how I understand. You came up with 135. And so, again, these are the best numbers we can get, but they're not, they're not... Would I stake my life on these numbers? No. Would I tell you that this gives you a good model to see the potential impact of it? Yes, I think there's logic behind it.
Trustee Costa.
Is the, and there has been some discussion about high turnover, because if we went ahead and phased this out in a one-year model, are we prepared to deal with that financially?
If, are we prepared if, if all 279, or some, the vast majority of all is 279? That would, in essence, consume all of the liability that's out there. No? Okay. Let me not answer that question. We've reserved enough, actuarially, for everybody that's eligible if they take it in the same year.
Correct. That is valued at fiscal year-end, June 30th of 2021, was the last time we raised that.
So that's in reserve?
Yeah. You would consume the reserve.
Right, and this is my ignorance, and I'm just asking. Vice President Leir has been among the people that have worked on this, correct?
The entire cabinet has touched this.
I spoke to one stakeholder, didn't think Rachel had looked at it, but that's not the case, right? Rachel has worked on this?
So...
I did all of, on those numbers that were just on your screen.
Yeah, I did those, based on the tables that were produced.
Okay.
So if the table, so if we did a two-year phase-out, we stop at the second column, and we spend an additional... we spend an additional 2.5?
You'd spend a couple million dollars more.
You spend an additional 2.4 to 2.6 million more dollars if we did it, either the 80% or the 100% if we took it out two years.
All right, we have Trustee Ingram.
Okay, but, but you just said you did not work on those numbers, but you believe those numbers to be, the numbers that were just on the screen, I did not prepare.
But it's based on the tables that everything else was pulled from. I just literally pulled it from that.
Okay. I'm lost is where we're at. We've had a motion moved and seconded?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, Trustee Hamel did have his hand up as well.
Oh, thank you. I was too busy looking at Kelsey Nazar to see where I'm supposed to be. So, Trustee Hamel, I didn't see you there, I apologize.
You're right, I took down some of the questions I had unanswered, and then I did come up with another one as Laura brought it up. So if 279 leave, what percentage of our full-time faculty and staff would we be losing?
I did not hear that, I'm sorry. Mr. Trustee.
The question was what percent of our full-time faculty and staff would we lose if, and then fill in the rest of the question?
All 279.
All 279 took it?
Yeah.
A third.
A third, and so you're projecting a sixth of our faculty and staff is will take this in one year?
I don't, I don't think that's right. It's just the liability.
No.
It's just the potential, right?
A third is what you're saying is potential, but I'm saying if you're saying it's 135 that are probably going to take it with estimations that, you know, again, you said you're not going to stake what on it? Not going to stake your life on it? Is that what you said? But if a third, if your number's correct, 135, you're looking at a sixth of our full-time employees leaving. I just know that.
That would be incorrect. It's not a sixth. If 135 people took it and we have over 1,200 employees, that's not a, that's not a sixth.
Yeah.
Our full-time faculty and staff base, I mean.
It's about 900.
It was over 1,000 people.
Yeah, I calculate like 2,100.
We would have to speculate that those same people would retire whether VERB was in place or not.
All right, let me, let me call to order here, please. Let me use the Hugh Spear gavel.
Dr. Bound?
So the national average in terms of the numbers of folks who utilize, that take advantage of retirement is about 13% in terms of national numbers. What we have seen year in and year out over the past 11 years with the various forms of incentives and years when we didn't have something in place, we've averaged 3% to 4% per year of the employees who have utilized the various forms of incentives or programs that were there. And so, I mean, to give you a sense of, the national averages are more like 13, and we're seeing in our group, our employees, 3% to 4% per year.
Any other discussion? Trustee Hamel.
Yeah, so I just want to, I want to clarify, there's 900 full-time employees right now, is that correct?
954 is what's in there.
954? Okay, so if we lose 135, you're talking about a seventh of our, seventh of our staff leaving, if your projections are right. If your projections are incorrect, it could be as much as a third. So we're, just want to make sure that's correct, right?
So we have approximate, just over 900 full-time employees currently employed. The budget calls for more than that, but we currently have about 906 employees currently employed, full-time employees within the college.
So then we are looking at, your projection of 135 over 906, we're looking at approximately a sixth of our faculty and staff is what we're projecting.
Just a little under six. I think we're two or three percentage points of someone would mercifully do the math.
14.09%.
Right. So, Trustee.
Hear that louder?
Any further discussion? Trustee Smith Everett, did you have something?
I can't hear people that are not at the podium. I can, I can hear them.
Yeah, there's, there's been quite a bit of chatter, and that's my fault, so. Any further discussion? Let me just add, my favorite plays in movies is the Broadway play 1776, and the question on independence comes down to a tiebreaker by the President of Congress, President Hancock, and he was thrilled to have to break the tie. And I'm sure I've said things out of both sides of my mouth today as I debated this among myself in real time, but I'm holding the Hugh Spear gavel. There's no hero worship in this world, but Dennis Moore was the closest thing to it I've ever had, and a gracious man, and a leader. And the faculty and the staff in this institution have known no greater ally than me, with all due respect and minus any ego. But I need to support my president, and he's, he's chosen to make this, this decision, so I'll be voting yes to support this and frankly endorsing the opinion of Trustee Smith Everett and that of Trustee Costa, and it is my expectation that we work to solve this issue because I don't want to live with it for the next three years, frankly. But I understand that this is the decision that's been made in the best interest of the college. I don't always agree with Dr. Bound, as he knows, the Cubs. Nevertheless, I'll be voting yes to support this, and with that said, the motion has been moved and seconded, and I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And those opposed?
No.
I only hear one no. Motion passes, six to one. The next item on the agenda is, Trustee Smith Everett, that's still you, you need to know?
Yes, so, yes, I do. I apologize, the Shawnee Mission end of your calendar got moved up, which means a award ceremony is calling my name, and I appreciate this rich discussion. Thank you so much. I will leave it up to you. I was on page three of our board packet, ready to present the recommendation for the payout, sick leave cash payout contribution.
Yes, yes, I can do that. You're asking me to do that?
Yes, please.
I said something to Dr. Bound, and whispering can often be a hindrance to the meeting under Roberts' rules, and so I didn't mean to not hear you, but I will take over. And congratulations and good luck to you, trustee.
Thank you.
You're welcome. As a consequence of the previous vote, we now have a couple of other items to, three other items here. There's the issue of the sick leave cash payout or 403B, 457 contribution, and it is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to offer a one-time sick leave cash payout or a 403B, 457 contribution for all employees except those employees who received or will receive a VERB payment during the sunset period, effective December 2022. Employees must have a minimum of 80 hours of sick leave remaining. A maximum of 100 hours may be converted to pay or issue a contribution. Average payout per employee is approximately $4,000 and subject to standard withholdings, and I would so move.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Quick question, I thought somewhere in here there was a, you still had to, you couldn't crash out all of your
That's correct.
sick leave, right? There's a minimum you have to keep.
80 hours.
Okay. No, it's right there, in black and white. Excuse me, I see it now. Sorry.
Bad document, bad document. All those, any discussion, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The next item is the issue of sick leave conversion. It is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to modify the current sick leave conversion policy as presented effective July 1, 2022. Employees may opt out to convert 40 hours of sick leave time to personal leave. Up to one, up to a maximum of 40 hours can be converted per fiscal year, and all, and employees must have no less than 80 hours of accrued sick leave remaining after the conversion. And I would make a motion to pass this recommendation.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any, any discussion?
I'm, I'm sorry, I should have asked the Committee of the Whole, probably, does employee there include our bargaining unit employees? And so do we have an estimate? So not against, I like the process, but if I, I guess I'm converting sick leave to personal leave, I'm more likely to take it, I don't have to have a reason. We then have to get a substitute professor in for that class, so it's not just, I guess we'd have to, there's, but is there an estimate of what, how we think that would fit into costs?
From a cost standpoint, it's cost neutral, because we're paying one, we're trading one form of.
Right, but they might not get sick, whereas they might take a personal day, was, I guess, was trying to figure out what that.
That's correct.
That's almost impossible to model.
It is impossible.
Okay.
To model, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Trustee Hamel, I don't mean to miss you if you need anything.
No, you're good.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. How do you say this, CARALU?
CARALU.
Mm-hmm. The CARALU Caregiver Support Program, I've heard you say it all week, and then I go to say it and I didn't. The CARALU Caregiver Support Program, it is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to establish a contract with CARALU for the provision of support services for employees effective July 1, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, in an amount not to exceed $43,200, and I would make a motion to support this recommendation.
Second.
Motion has been made by myself and seconded by trustee Joey Costa. Any discussion? Any discussion?
I think just, let me speak to the fact that initially when we did Committee of the Whole, we talked about $36,000. However, we have the ability to serve, and part of the discussion that day was, you know, do we include part-time employees or not? And it's after further evaluation, we believe it would be a significant benefit to a, our part-time employees to have the same thing available, and it, for a very minor cost, it provides a very low-cost benefit to all of our full-time and part-time regular employees.
And I just interlinated that into the official motion at the recommendation request of Dr. Bound, so that's out there. All those, any discussion, I'm sorry, let me ask again. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr., I'm, I'm the chair, excuse me. That concludes the report of the Committee of the Whole, and the next item on our agenda is the President's recommendation.
Nope, no, 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 sorry, we got to do a few more.
I need slide.
Okay.
Whoa. I missed that.
We got to go back farther and, yeah.
No, I'm sorry.
About four more things.
Science lab project update, yes, of course. Mr. Mike Neal, the EVP and COO.
There we go.
Mr. Tom Hall, AVP Campus Services Facilities Planning, gave us an update on the science labs renovation project. They reviewed the timeline of the project and provided details on the need to use contingency funds. Based on the information presented by PGAV Architects and McCown Gordon, the project will be completed using a phased guaranteed maximum GMP approach. The project is expected to complete in the spring of 2023 with occupancy in the fall of 2023. On June 17, 2021, the Board of Trustees reviewed the science lab remodel project and approved the project for a total budget of $44.15 million, and the construction manager at risk, CMAR, not to exceed $34.33 million. With a slight modification in scope, unanticipated structural costs and higher inflation exacerbated by the war in Ukraine, has increased the total GMP to $36,315,388, and the total project budget remains unchanged. There's a GMP table on page 22 of the board packet totaling the $36.315 million, and it is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to prove the guaranteed maximum price proposals issued to McCown Gordon, the construction manager at risk, risk not to exceed $36,315,388, and I would make a motion to support that recommendation.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I think it's important to note that this money comes out of a contingency already budgeted for this, for this very massive and very needed project, and we, we approve contingencies a lot, most of the time they're not needed. For lots of reasons, it was needed in this case, and I'm glad we had it budgeted that way, and, and it's available without exceeding what we had already budgeted.
I agree. Any other discussion? Any other discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, and I count six more. If I miss any, you'll let me know.
We're doing good.
Okay, great.
Now we're onto the budget.
Rachel Leers, Associate Vice President, Financial Services CFO, reported on the proposed general post-secondary technical education funds management budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023, as presented below on page 24 of your packet. This includes budgeted use of reserves for science lab renovations of $26 million in fiscal year '22, $14 million in fiscal year '23. The college will complete the required notifications and public hearing prior to the adoption of the legal budget for the fiscal year 2022, '23, which will be filed with the county clerk according to statutory requirements. And it is then the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees approve for the fiscal year 2022 and '23 management budget as presented by the college administration here.
I thought would be that we would have Rachel do the very quick, like she did at Committee of the Whole, frame the budget
Okay, great.
for the conversation.
Happy to take a break.
I don't know if you want to take a motion now and then ever do that and proceed, or how you want to do it.
Let me, in my brain, I would include it in discussion, if I may.
Okay.
If that's appropriate, but I'd like to do that. Please.
Okay, sure. Yes, as Dr. Bound said, I wanted to just real quickly run through the two slides, the summary slides that I presented at the Committee of the Whole meeting a couple of weeks ago to provide some context, really, as you begin your discussion, on the recommendation to adopt the management budget for next fiscal year, and again, to highlight some of the key components of the proposed fiscal '23 budget. So again, before the Committee of the Whole meeting, we did spend an hour at our annual budget workshop on April 21st, and before that, we had a 90-minute board retreat to talk about the college's finances and the proposed budget for next year. So we have spent a significant amount of time reviewing the detailed assumptions that go into this proposed budget, and again, the material is on the college website as it relates to the budget workshop that was conducted last month. So again, real quickly, in bringing this recommendation forward to adopt the proposed fiscal '23 management budget, the administration believes that this budget effectively balances the needs of taxpayers, students, and our employees while also investing in the future of the college. Again, just to highlight some of the key features of the budget, we are proposing to reduce the college's tax levy rate by 4 tenths of a mil. That would be our fourth mil levy rate reduction in the past five years, which is estimated to save Johnson County taxpayers between $5 and $6 million next year. We are proposing to create a new $200,000 College Now grant in the general fund that will help us to support access and affordability for Johnson County resident students. Again, those are high school students taking credit courses here at the college. We are providing for a 2.5% compensation increase across the board for faculty and staff members. That's pursuant to our negotiations with the Faculty Association last spring. As Dr. Harden presented earlier, we are proposing to make additional investments in our employees by establishing a $15-an-hour minimum wage and funding a career lathering program that you all recently discussed. We are providing over $800,000 in funding for strategic plan initiatives tied to the college's 2021-2025 strategic plan, and we will complete the science lab renovation project next fiscal year. Again, that's been funded over the past three fiscal years with contributions from general fund reserves on the total project budget of $44 million that you just reviewed. So when it comes to the actual numbers, again, this is the proposed general fund management budget for fiscal '23 presented here with the current year fiscal management budget for fiscal '23 presented here with the current year, fiscal '22, just for comparative purposes. We are bringing forward a budget with revenue of $170.3 million and proposed expenditures of $183.4 million. So again, this is a proposed budget with a deficit or spending down of reserves of approximately $13 million. So again, if you were to add back the one-time expenditure to complete the Science Lab project of $14 million, we are essentially proposing a balanced budget in the general fund for next year. I wanted to make one last comment about the property tax revenue line that's proposed here. I talked about the recommendation to reduce the mil levy rate and that saving taxpayers between $5 and $6 million. You can, you can see here, we are still planning to receive additional tax revenue incremental year-over-year when compared to fiscal '22. And that is due to increases in property values in Johnson County. If we weren't planning to reduce the mil levy rate, that incremental year-over-year revenue would be about $11.5 million. We think that $5.5 million as proposed is the appropriate amount to fund this budget and these priorities. So I'll stop there and see if you all have any other questions from there.
Any questions for Vice President Leers?
One thing that I think could be helpful for you to explain, Rachel, I think we could get it for the public. The valuation went up 11.6%. We are using 9.25%. What's the difference?
And I think that 11% was appraised values. And so, we have looked at the commercial properties and the residential properties, applied the assessment rates. And we have also allowed for appeals, potential appeals, delinquencies, late payments of taxes, those sorts of things, in coming down to almost a net, if you will, estimated rate of 9.25% for next year.
Thank you.
Somebody again explain to me, what's the difference between appraisal and assessed value?
Appraised value is the fair market value of your property. So if your home's worth $100,000, it's appraised at that. It is assessed at 11.5% of the, it's assessed at 11.5% of the appraised value. So your assessed valuation on that home would be $11,500.
For a residence.
A residence.
And a business is 25%.
They're by proving to you my ignorance, so I'm sorry.
No, here.
Any other questions for Vice President Leers? You know, thank you for being here.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
No other questions?
I don't see any. Trustee Hamel, do you have any questions?
No, you're not.
Okay.
All right.
I don't believe so.
Excellent, thank you.
Any further discussion, fellow trustees, on the?
We have a motion.
We do have.
You do need a motion.
I didn't think we had a motion.
We didn't take one.
You said you wanted to, but you didn't.
That's my fault. I would make the motion based upon the recommendation of the College Administration here. I can't do that.
I will second it so long as I'm still allowed to make a motion to amend. And I think everybody knows this, my motion to amend is to increase, to reduce the mil levy by .5 instead of .4 mils. And I can speak to that if this would be appropriate now.
Let me ask, do you have, I think we need you to have a second.
I need a second on my.
It's a substitute motion.
Right.
Is there a second to trustee Musial's substitute motion?
I second it.
Okay, good. The motion has been moved and seconded, moved by trustee Greg Musial and seconded by trustee Dawn Ratan. Now I believe we go to discussion.
Yeah, I'll explain the reasoning behind my motion. I know that as part of this discussion, there's going to be the factor of the set aside in the budget for the Office of DEI. And I'm going to address that separately, but I just want to first start about, you're not the only one confused, Chair Cross, with the property tax system, which is antiquated and confusing. We have appraised value, we have assessed value, and then we have mil levies, which a mil is $1 of taxation on every $1,000 of value. So, it gets confusing. Homes in Kansas are assessed at 11.5% of their fair market value. Businesses are assessed at 25%. So businesses pay about 2.5 times more than homes on their fair market, based on their fair market value. Basically, if your home's assessed at $100,000 or appraised at $100,000, it's assessed, if it's assessed at $100,000 and the mil levy is .1, you would pay $100 in taxes. A business would pay $250. We've talked a little bit about the increase in valuation in Johnson County, which was dramatic. Last December, when we adopted budget guidelines, and I realize that three of the new trustees were not part of that, we estimated a 4% increase in appraised value, which we all thought was reasonable at the time, and was reasonable at the time. It turned out to be 11-some percent. If we don't reduce the mil levy, and everybody's, I think everybody's in support of reducing the mil levy. If we didn't, it would be over $11 million in new revenue. And with the .4 mils, if I remember from the chart, the .4 mil reduction, we would still get about $5.7 million in new dollars. Is that what that number was? I had a different number in my notes, but I think it showed about $5.7 million in new money.
$5.591.
$5.591. $5.6 for my purposes. Thank you, Mike. And I've consistently pushed for a lower mil levy in the last few years as property taxes have gone, as property valuations have gone up and up in Johnson County. I know, having, having talked to trustee Hamel and listening to the Committee of the Whole, that Mark is advocating a revenue-neutral cut, which I think would reduce the mil levy by .8. And I have not supported a revenue-neutral budget in the past. And a revenue-neutral means we don't take one penny more than we took last year. And, and, you know, if a constituent asks me why not, I will tell them, we promised salary increases for our employees. We have significantly higher costs, about $3.5 million in health insurance and other compensation benefits next year. Just like everybody else, we are facing those higher costs. Our 2.5% increase in salary and our employee benefits add up to about $3.5 million in new expenses. So taking not a penny more than last year would mean additional spending out of reserves that we're already doing. We're building in structural compensation increases, part of the equity in the compensation plan we talked about of about $2 million. And I haven't heard anybody propose not making those payments on commitments that I think we've made. In addition, a true revenue-neutral rate ignores the fact that Johnson County is growing. So every new warehouse, every new home, every new business creates new value in the county. And that new value, although not a huge percentage of the overall increase, I think is worthy of being captured, particularly when Johnson County Community Colleges helped create the economic environment. I've consistently maintained that our positive impact on the community means that new growth should also help contribute to the college. I agree with Mark, we need to find some ways to restrain our spending. We are basically teaching the credit hours of 2002 on a budget of 2022. We need to avoid layering new programs on top of old instead of finding better ways to do things. And we need to increase our enrollment. But I did some math today. If we increase our enrollment by 1,000 students and they take nine hours, nine credit hours a semester, which is a little more than the average student, I think, and we use a blended rate of $105 a credit hour, some at 97 from Johnson County and some at 116 from out of state, in a year, we'd raise about $2 million, little under $1 million per semester. So we can't, I don't think, effectively grow enrollment as a way out of my concerns about sustainability of our overall spending. Last year, we lowered the mil by .1, and I think there were, I tried to lower it further and we lost 4 to 3. I believe we should lower it to point a full half mil this year. That would reduce the property tax burden on Johnson County taxpayers by about 1.3 million, reducing our revenues the same amount, which would have to come out of reserves. So there is a reason we have reserves, and my plan would spend that out of reserves. Here are the points, I think. We still have plenty of reserves to meet our 25% guideline of the amount of annual budget that's in reserves. We still would have a very favorable composite financial index score. We would still be able to increase the pay and maintain the benefits for our employees. And ultimately, we would get about $4.8 million in new revenues. Last December, when we approved the budget guidelines, my notes reflect that we anticipated getting about $5.7 million in new revenues based on a 4% valuation increase. So my suggestion is less than that, but we are in a very healthy financial position, especially because of some of the federal COVID funding. And so I think only receiving $4.8 million in new dollars is a meaningful revenue increase in this. And given the increase in values for folks and the fact that their taxes are still going to go up, I don't call this a tax cut, as has been alleged, that we're trying to sell a tax cut. We're selling a mil levy reduction, which will still result in higher taxes if your home value went up, like my home value went up. But those are the reasons for my motion, and I hope trustees will support increasing the mil levy reduction from .4 to .5. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee. Any other discussion, trustee, I believe trustee Hamel, then trustee Costin?
Yeah, thank you. Greg, I want to say thank you. I appreciate a lot of your comments, and you did get a lot of what I was saying presented well. So I appreciate that. One of the things that I'm looking at clarification on that was new to me is I know we did the reduction for the mil levy last year. And instead of getting a 4% increase, we ended up with an 11% approximately or an additional 5.6 more in revenue than we thought we were going to receive.
Jason, can we raise the volume on him, please? Mark, I'm sorry, I can't hear you very well at any rate.
Apologies.
No, no, it's, I don't know whose fault it is, I'm just asking.
Does that help at all?
Yes.
Okay. So, did we see more revenue than we expected from the last mil levy reduction? Did we see more revenue?
I think that's right.
Okay, so, so we expected a 4% increase, and we ended up with about a 9 and a .6% increase?
That's for next year.
That's for next year.
Okay, so we're projecting to have, okay, so then we're talking about doing another 6% now this time? Or this was the 5.6?
The .4 mil levy decrease will result in about $5.6 million new dollars, even with the mil levy reduction for fiscal year 2023.
Because, because property values.
Yeah, what I'm, sorry, what I'm asking about is last year's reduction of the mil levy, the .1. How much did we see a revenue increase on that, that year than with the .1 reduction?
So, we're still.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, thank you, Rachel.
So it's May 12, and we're still in that fiscal year, right? And so we are going to get a large tax distribution from Johnson County on about June 2. And so at that point, we will know how we finish the fiscal year comparing budget to actual.
But now we expect to see more than we initially thought when we dropped the mil levy .1?
No, I think we're within a very close range to what we had projected in our budget. I look at the Treasurers Report, and I don't see a significant variance there to what we expected to receive.
Okay, thank you. So, again, one of my biggest, my biggest issues is that, again, as Greg brought up, we are doing about the same credit hours we were 20 years ago. And we have seen about a 30% reduction in the credit hours we are providing in the last 10 years. And yet, our expenses has doubled in this, in that 20 years. And again, we keep bringing it up more and more. We lost like 5.9% credit hours last year, is that what it was?
I don't know.
Roughly.
Roughly, yes.
Or 5.9% of the students, and I think it's a 14% reduction in the credit hours, is what I'm looking at right here. So either way, my point is, is we keep doing less, and we are not bringing our students in. I really think we need to focus on that, as Greg mentioned as well. But I'm definitely feeling we need to figure out how to, especially these economic times where people are, I had some calls on this today and multiple conversations about people talking about food prices and gas prices and everything going up, and they're feeling this pinch everywhere. Rents are going up, mortgage, you know, it's crazy, buying a house is costing more and more. And we're talking about, we're talking about asking the taxpayers to give us more money when we are taking care of less students and get present, and we're also taking care of less credit hours. And this is my biggest issue, when we keep, over the last 10 years, when we keep doing less and less, we continue to ask for a tax raise. And now we're doing a tax hike again after the 10th or 11th year now of losing students, losing credit hours. That concludes my statement.
Thank you, trustee Hamel. Who, trustee Costin is next, I believe.
Thank you. I forgot what I was going to say, actually.
We can come back to you.
Well, I'm just a little baffled by the conversation. I appreciate what trustee Musial has, the issues you raise. But I'm curious what, which part of the strategic plan that the administration has put forward, would we be cutting back on if we took your advice and lowered it to .5? I worry that we have, again, put people in charge to think about how all of these different parts have to fit together when we're trying to orchestrate change within a large organization. And so, making sure we're spinning all those plates just right, making sure that we are thinking about the ways in which the revenue comes in and we're spending it. The budget was prepared with a certain amount of revenue in mind. Do you have a sense that, you know, where would that extra, where would that, I know you said it will come from reserve, but still, there may be other extenuating factors that might cause us to call upon reserve again. So how do we mitigate that?
I think it's a question each of us have to ponder as to whether or not we think our reserves are sufficient. I think our reserves are sufficient to spend 1.3 million out of those in addition to what's been on the, on the Science Labs in a one-year basis, based on the overall health of the college. I think we saw that our composite financial index was 7.05. And it will drop, it will drop, as we heard at the Committee of the Whole, if we go to .5. I'm not, I'm not identifying any part of the budget that won't be spent. I'm not cutting out some of the budget. I'm saying that we have reserves sufficient to absorb that. So, the budget that has been presented is, I'm supporting the budget that's been presented. And I know we have another piece of it that we all want to talk about at some point. But that's, that's my plan. I've always suggested that if you come in and you want to reduce revenue, you need to tell where it's going to come from. And that's got to be, we're not paying people as much, we're not doing the Science Labs, we're not buying paper, or we're going to take it out of reserves. We've built up our reserves over the last number of years to allow us to spend 40 million out of it for Science Labs, or whatever the number is, over two years. And we still have sufficient reserves. And once those are spent, we'll start, I think we will start building our reserves back up as the projections show. So with that in mind, I think we can give a little bit of property tax relief, a little bit more than what the President has recommended.
So if my calculations are correct, for a home that is roughly $250,000 would be assessed around $38,000, this additional mil levy decrease would cost that homeowner how much?
I'd have to do the math. It would save probably in the 15 to $20 range per year.
50?
15.
15, right.
A tenth of a mil raises $1.3 million for us. That's spread over all homeowners and businesses. So it's not, it's not a big amount over, for individual homeowners.
Right. Just collectively en masse, it adds up to a lot of money, but the individual homeowner is probably not going to even notice it.
Well, I.
So the relief you're talking about, I'm just trying to make a point, the relief you're talking about is really minuscule.
I don't disagree unless you're somebody where that $20 means something to you. That $20 is a lot more on an apartment complex and may affect rent for our students. And the other, the one thing I learned when I was on city council is it's very easy to use those numbers to justify keeping a mil levy at a certain place. And I think, I commend the administration for moving it to .4 reduction. I think we could afford more than .5, but my proposal is for .5. I think a half a mil decrease is another 1.3 million in property tax relief. And it's a more, it's a symbolic symbol that we are willing to do something more meaningful as a college. That's the reasons for me proposing it.
Thank you.
Trustee Hamel's already gone, trustee Ratan.
I would agree and say that this is unprecedented times in our economy. Gas, homes, goods are more expensive and hard to come by. Gas, homes, goods are more expensive and hard to come by. We've had a pandemic, we've had a war, and prices have risen exponentially, very quickly. We don't know if they're going to fall, maintain, or rise even more. However, that applies to us at the college as well. We need to make sure that we, as a college, can roll with the unknown economic rollercoaster that is our present time and our future time. The other point I'd like to make is, I have three kids. I have one less kid that stays with me. I'm not parenting any less, I'm still the same amount of parenting, even though I have two kids that live with me. I would also say that I'm spending a lot more money now in 2022 than I spent in 2012 when I had all three kids at home. So my personal price and my personal costs have risen even with less kids to parent at home. When you're talking about your cost, Trustee Costin, I did look up on Realtor.com the median price of homes. It is now showing that in Johnson County is $392,000. To reduce from our current 9.11 mill levy to Trustee Musial's 8.61, that makes the assessed value of a home $45,000, $45,080, 4580, at 11.5% times the current, the value of the home. So that reduces the taxpayer's burden from $410 to $388, to your point, Joy, saving approximately $22, which is approximately $1.06 per day. And for me, to support this college, the trades, the arts, the Small Business Center and all that we do, I calculated also 2,100 employees, I may have included our part-time, $1.06 per day is well worth to have this gem here in our community. And I also calculated that that's about 2.15 cents per employee per year. So for me, I support the symbolic, I understand what you're saying, Trustee Musial, to go down another, to stretch, because we should stretch to support our community. However, I do not support revenue neutral, because I want to make sure that we have enough cushion to make sure that our college remains sustainable. We've had a lot of conversations about that and our unknown future. That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Ratan. Trustee Hamel.
Yes, thank you. And I do understand that this may not be the largest, biggest hit that everybody's going to see in their pocketbook, but again, if everybody takes that same stance, again, you're looking at a 6% raise or more for the taxpayers and for the rents going up. I'm basically just really concerned about how do we justify asking for a 6% raise from our community when we're doing 14% less credit hours? And again, over the last 10 years, we're looking at a 40% reduction, 46% reduction in credit hours. I mean, it just, it concerns me that we keep asking for a raise continuously. When do we say, hey, you know what, we're not doing as much, maybe we shouldn't ask for extra in particular? I'm not even saying we need to give back that we're doing 14% less work, we should give back 14%, or make it match maybe inflation of 8% that we're seeing right now. And so we should do a reduction of, you know, point, or maybe a one-point, or actually mill levy reduction to actually keep up with inflation. I'm saying we need to figure out how to be a good partner with our community, and we are in so many ways, obviously, but this is the one area, or one of the few areas where I feel like we fall short as a college for being a good partner with our community. And again, I will support the .5 if that's all we can get, I will, I will definitely take that.
Thank you, Trustee Hamel. I really work to, Dick Carter, of all people, encouraged me to be more refined as a chair, and I benefit from his guidance. But Mark, while we share much in common socially and certainly KU, I don't mean to be a wise acre, but in one of our previous votes, you stressed the importance of institutional knowledge and keeping people around. So I guess, for me, at .8, that is by definition a loss with the near-record 40-year inflation we've seen. So the immediate answer to you is at .8, we need to, you know, pay to retain the institutional knowledge that you stressed earlier. But I mean, they're good questions, and I certainly do respect your opinion, and I understand where you're coming from. And I think it's really a credit to our county, the strength of our economy, and I think a lot of hard work. I know as a homeowner, we've made some renovations to our home, and I know it takes a lot of money to secure an investment and to have those values go up. I will note that the proposed budget for fiscal year 2023 is a budget cut, if I'm reading this right. We go from $188.3 million last year to $183.4 million this year. I am conservative by a political science nature in terms of sticking with what works. Certain institutions work, and we should stick by that. So I'm, I'm proud of that budget cut, and I think that's something we can all hang our hat on. My preference would be for .2, and in my role as chair, and as people bring things to me, and I asked for this role, and I'm happy for it. I don't think I have a recommendation of .2. I think you'd be glad to know, Mr. President. I understand Trustee Musial's desire to have the symbolic vote at .5. I agree it is symbolic. I do disagree. I've just expressed my personal desire, because of inflation and because of personal preference, to go to .2. I don't think I have support for that. I don't want to waste the time with a substitute motion, but I will probably vote against your .5, and as a compromise, support the administration's recommendation of .4. But for those of you that want the .5, I understand it and appreciate it, and I know it is symbolic, and we've got pressure on us in terms of our reserves and where our budget's going. And Trustee Hamel's not wrong on some level. I do disagree with him, but those are realities. We have a skyrocketing budget, liabilities that, that don't stop, and yet ever-enrolling, ever-dwindling enrollment, which leads me to this, and it was Trustee Cook, he used to always say, I challenge you, I want to challenge you, I want to challenge you. As one faculty member here said to me yesterday, you know, it's the faculty's job, it's everyone's job to get enrollment up. Even if we can't get our enrollment directly up, I think it was, I had disagreements and criticisms with Dr. Carlson, but Dr. Carlson, previous administrations that did a good job of going to service groups, going to foundations, and making sure we were there, asking for invitations, going, going, so that when the economy does turn down, as Dr. Weber has pointed out, there's simply jobs available, so they don't want to come talk to us. What I saw in my clientele and in my practice, '08, '09, and '10, and '11, there was, there was, golly, I think every administration from Bush to President has gone after these for-profit institutions that will literally prey on veterans and other people with federal student loans. So I want to be in position when we are needed. And so I will support the administration's recommendation of .4, although I certainly appreciate dearly the time and effort that went into Trustee Musial's proposal, but I will be voting no, and then ask if there's any further discussion here.
I don't have anything to add, but I will be supporting the .5.
Okay. Mark's hand is still up, I don't know.
Trustee Hamel, did you have anything further?
Yes, thank you. I want to bring up one more thing, was that we were talking about, and I'm looking for the page exactly what all we were talking about adding to this budget, one of them being an office of DEI for $400,000 setting aside. And, you know, again, I do understand that you want to make sure, and the people that are basically saying they're supporting the .4 reduction, that we want to keep the college strong, and I get that, obviously, I feel exactly the same way. Well, we're talking about adding in more expenses when we're saying maybe it's not a good time to add more expenses. And there was a few more things being added to the budget that was being highlighted, and I'm actually at a loss trying to find that page right now. I don't know if anybody knows what it is, but what if we look at, basically, holding off on adding these new items to the budget that we, I'm going to say we do not need? We're adding, we're talking about adding an office of DEI. We tried this experiment approximately 10 years ago. It sounded like it ended in a lot of hurt feelings and lawsuits that costed us money as well, as far as I understand. I don't know why we want to spend almost a half a million dollars when we're saying we're tight, and it could possibly cause us lawsuits in the future. This doesn't seem like a great time to bring this up. And then again, the Ruffalo Report, as I've heard about from 2019, which basically said that our culture is absolutely amazing, one of the best that they've seen at a college across the campus, and they were, their recommendation was not to, not to start an office of DEI, as far as I understand. And I would love to see that report still.
Well, certainly, we can talk to the administration about providing that. I'd like to respond. Trustee Hamel, do you have anything further? I don't mean to cut you off.
No, thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Chair, I might suggest that we address this this way, and I know I'm not chair anymore, but vote on the amendment to establish the mill levy, and then talk about if there are individual parts of the budget that somebody wants to speak to.
I'm in favor of that, but let me, let me finish.
Sure.
Okay. I think it's Trustee Snyder's idea to put this quote up on the wall, this vision, that JCC will be an innovative leader in an equitable student access and learning and success, if I read that right. I might have been a little nervous. And I know it was Trustee Snyder's idea, and he deserves credit for that, but I often quote the book Moneyball and other Michael Lewis books where we need to do things to be innovative. And I see it as a strategic expense designed to help us, what the legislature has in its wisdom encouraged us to let the market decide with respect to how to operate. And I just finished a book about Lamar Hunt, A Life in Sports, by Michael B. Cambridge, a local Kansas City guy. And Lamar Hunt was certainly an innovator who I believe is in three different sports Hall of Fames. He's in the NFLs, the international tennis community, and soccer on a number of levels. What the man did for soccer in our country is amazing. And the man was an innovator. He could have sat back and just rolled on his oil fortune that his dad had, but he constantly wanted to innovate and do other things to sew together the fabric of a community. And so that's, I don't really mean to argue with you, Trustee Hamel, that's just my immediate response to you, that it's a strategic investment that we need to make right now, despite what is difficult and frankly relatively unforeseeable times in terms of what lies ahead. But I enjoyed talking with you.
That's well.
I appreciate talking with you as well, Lee. Thank you.
So we have a motion on the floor in a second, and will you all get to talk? I just wanted to say.
It's .217.
Any further discussion?
.217.
This is a vote on the amendment.
This is a vote on the .5 amendment.
Sorry.
You're good, I don't mean to cut you off. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion has been called.
Aye.
So we have, I believe, four votes.
Is this the motion?
This is the amendment.
Clarify.
This is the amendment, this is the .5 amendment to the administration's recommendation, and I didn't register your vote, I heard four from Trustee Ingram.
I wasn't sure what we were voting on.
No, no, I'm not trying to be a wiseacre, I'm just, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. I think we have four. Were you a yes? You're a yes. I'm a no. I'm a no. So that passes five to one. Trustee Hamel said yes. You said yes, right, Mark?
Correct.
Okay, I had five, one. And so now, the motion passes.
We still need a motion to adopt the management budget with that amendment.
Okay, excuse me. Would you like to make that motion, Mr. Trustee?
I would move to adopt the management budget as amended.
The motion has been moved. Is there a second?
Second. Second.
The motion has been moved by Trustee Greg Musial and seconded by Trustee Nancy Ingram. Any discussion? Trustee Hamel.
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment to remove the $400,000 for the office of DEI.
Is there a second? Does the motion have a second? Hearing none, Trustee Hamel, I need to move on to further discussion.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Seeing none.
I think it's important that we address the DEI issue, given, given what we've all received in our inboxes.
Fair enough.
I think I received about 15 emails. I have them here, I've read them, they were all pretty much on the same scale. And I just, I want at least to address for myself, so that there's no confusion out there about my position on this. We've been trying to identify and understand and evaluate and structure appropriate DEI programs since at least the fall of 2018. That was not undertaken because we thought we were not diverse, or we were not welcoming, or we were not inclusive. It was taken as a best practice, and we had a national consulting firm that came in to try to help us measure what that is. And I think all of you have been provided, provided a copy of the DEI assessment. And throughout this effort, my goal has been to promote JCC as a diverse learning environment that welcomes all people and all ideas and all discussions, and provides tools and resources so individual students can achieve success. And I hope we measure that by retention and ultimately getting their certificate or their associate's degree. That effort to identify student needs inevitably leads to identification of groups with common characteristics, because it's pretty hard to go out and find 16,000 individual students and evaluate every one of those. However, those groups need not be and should not be identified solely on the basis of characteristics that have energized both ends of our political spectrum. First-generation students have different needs and need different resources than other students if they're going to complete a degree. Veterans coming from the military have different needs and different resources if they're going to complete an associate's degree or certificate program. Pell Grant-eligible students have different needs and require different resources if we're going to help them complete. Full-time students have different needs than part-time students. So this effort should be about student success for all students. It is not and should not be exclusively about race, creed, color, gender identity, LGBTQ+ political ideology, class, or any other category. Need not and should not, in my opinion. It is about a concerted, coordinated, collaborative, and intentional effort to understand how to best serve individual students and groups of students with common needs, so they complete their program of study and become enthusiastic, capable, and productive citizens. With that said, I have been and I remain skeptical about a cabinet-level DEI office as the appropriate structure to do that. I voiced that in public meetings, I've heard that from people, the members of the campus community, I've shared it with Dr. Bowden in private, and I will say reserving that amount in the budget is not, in my mind, a final decision on how the structure of our DEI effort will go forward. It's not a final decision on how we define our effort or what leadership we establish. I take Dr. Bowden at his word that he will listen from this board, from community input, from campus input, and come back with a report and a summary and a recommendation for action. It is the President and his administration's responsibility to evaluate and bring options to the board, and then for us as a board to decide. I would be surprised if this board did not take seriously our responsibility when that time arrives. So with that, I don't have a problem reserving that amount in the budget, but I do want to offer a final thought. If you are a member of the public and someone asserts to you that something is hidden in the budget, or that something has not been transparent, I hope you will ask questions to challenge that assertion. Ask how long the topic has been part of a discussion. Ask if it's been on an agenda. Ask if it's been presented in a PowerPoint. Ask if it's been in a public meeting, and if so, how many times? Because on this topic and on the sunsetting of the verb and the overall budget, all of those have been before this board multiple, multiple times. The particular reservation of money for the strategic idea of a DEI program was presented in March at our retreat. It has been discussed in Committee of the Holes before that. These have all been in regular board meetings, our retreats, our Committee of the Whole, all of which are publicized, open to the public, and you can attend in person or virtually. So I hope and trust and know that Johnson County residents won't simply read a Facebook post or a tweet and from those draw final conclusions on any issue. At least, I hope not, and that, I think, is important for me to clarify, given some of the emails that suggested other motivations. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee. Trustee Don Ratan, and then Trustee Hamel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, as an engineer, I like to really just crunch the numbers. Let's talk about the data. This is $400,000 of a $184 million budget. This is $400,000 of a $184 million budget. This is .217% of our budget. The whole strategic plan of $800,000 doesn't even register at half a percent of this budget. So, you know, I don't know if this is starting a culture war, or some different ideologies, but if we're talking about budgets, that is the actual percent of the budget that DEI is asking for. I do appreciate that former faculty leader Dr. Leicher and Dr. Bound have a commitment to diversity, as I do too. I'm a firm believer in diversity, equity, and inclusion. I've seen it work at my former company, at Procter &amp; Gamble, and what we said is, we need to look like our customers. A more diverse workforce is going to result in more profit. And I know we're not a business, but a more diverse student body is going to result in a better workforce that goes out into our Johnson County community, and I believe that with every fiber of my being. Diversity is hard to figure out, it is emotional, and it has failed in the past. But does that mean that we should give up on it and not work on it? I disagree with that. I do believe that the leadership of DEI rests in the highest levels of the business, and has to have buy-ins at the highest levels first. So as I looked, I've looked at the strategic plan multiple times, and, and all the other ones for student success, employee engagement, we have three or four lines. For DEI, we have one. Put an office in, because we can't figure it out, because it's hard. My suggestion, and not to get into the weeds as a trustee, is take out that DEI line, take that $400,000, and it's in your employee engagement, it's in your student success, and it's in the third line, the community partnerships. So that's where you feed it in there, and maybe you have another $100,000 for DEI for TBD. But you put that in those three lines, and the people who are the champions, and the leaders, and the executive levels of those are then responsible, and you spread out that accountability across this college. Again, back to the highest levels of the business, because that's what's been proven to work in businesses that get it right. Finally, I believe that when people who are marginalized, immigrants, first generations, LGBTQ, Black people, women, veterans, students with disabilities win, I believe that we all win. I am a firm believer in my life in abundance theory, not scarcity theory, and that there's enough for it to go around, and if somebody wins, that I don't have to lose. And I believe that we do have to prioritize our biggest gaps, and we have to work to close the gaps in each of those three sections of student success, community partnership, and employee engagement with an eye towards DEI. That's the end of my statements.
Thank you, Trustee Ratan. Trustee Hamel and Trustee Joy Coaston.
Thank you. So I will say we are leading the way, and I challenge anybody to disagree. We are leading the way with diversity and inclusion here at Johnson County Community College. And from what I understand, the Ruffalo Report again stated this very well, how well and how amazing our campus has been and our community is. It's strong, we're already doing it, and now we're following the way, because multiple other colleges have opened an office, and we're just going to fall in line. We tried it, it caused issues, it was not done well. And to me, this is not transparent, to say, hey, we're going to set aside $400,000, and we're not going to, we don't even know how we're going to spend it yet. This should be a separate line item outside of the budget, that we can fully discuss, know exactly what we're voting on. This is how we get in trouble, if we start spending money that we don't even know what we're buying yet. This, this does not work for me at all.
Thank you, Trustee Hamel. Do you have anything further?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Coaston.
Thank you, Chair. Diversity, equity, and inclusion means a lot of things, but it does not mean forced outcomes, as some seem to think. It means that in this position, we'll have an individual who's dedicated to understanding the barriers that stand in the way of our success, our students, our faculty, and our staff. By understanding those barriers, we can better address them and ensure success for all. My understanding, being a new trustee, is that this new office of DEI has been vetted by a number of internal stakeholders for quite some time. They've had multiple, multiple conversations over the course of, I think, a year, and have outlined a series of guidelines through which this office will function. The allocation of $400,000 is to support the creation of this office and the individual or individuals who will be responsible for ensuring that we address barriers that stand in the way of our collective success. The allocation hasn't been hidden in the budget. In fact, we've talked about this budget a lot since, since we were installed in early January. It has been robust conversations and quite transparent. So I will be supporting the budget allocation to create this office, and absolutely be hoping that we can find a way to make sure that every individual who steps foot on this campus wishes to succeed, whether it's academically or through a career path. So, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Coaston. Trustee Ingram, did you have anything to add?
Well, I would like to add a couple of things. You know, this has been a discussion over a number of years, I don't want to go over that again and again and again, but I think, to some degree, we've talked about training, and looking at departments that have gaps. You know, I think there's still some pieces that we all kind of, that get lost in all of this, too, that overall, it's something that I would completely support. But I loved, Don, your comment that you made about it being in every strategic area that we're talking about. And interestingly enough, you know, we have all received a number of emails in the last day or two, but one of them that came across this morning, I think it was this morning, it was at some point today, said DEI should be a guiding principle for the entire college. And I think that's what you're really trying to say. It's a guiding principle as much as anything else. So whether that looks like a department with someone, you know, my reservation has been perhaps a cabinet position at this point. I'm not sure where that needs to fall. I, I just don't know. I don't know where that needs to go. And I'm certainly not a professional, and don't want to indicate that I'm the only one who would know. But I support, you know, I think when, when we went through the process with you, when we hired you, you know, that was the first time I had ever really heard of belonging. You know, we'd heard of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and belonging came up, and I thought, you know, that's, that's what I want to hear. But for years, we have heard how great this college is, and that our students feel comfortable. And I don't want that to ever be forgotten. You know, and, and I remember the point when that was brought up in the most recent report. You know, we literally looked at our faculty and staff and said, it's because of you all, you know, that they feel this way. Now, that doesn't mean that there's not room for improvement, but I think it, it should be, you know, also looked upon, I want to talk about the training, faculty development, those kinds of things that I don't want to get lost. It's not just a department to me, it's a lot of other pieces, too. So just to keep that in mind. And the other thing that I would say is, thank you to the staff who has spent a lot of time doing this. You know, as I understand, there's just a lot of people who, I will use the terminology overworked, was shared with me about this. It's gone on for over five years, we've kind of gotten lost in COVID, and forget, we have talked about this forever. So I would specifically want to thank everyone, too, for all the work that they've done.
I concur in that. I was going to speak, but Trustee Laura Smith-Evatt has reappeared, and would she like to address the issue of diversity, equity, and inclusion in our budget? And if you're not ready, I'm happy to go, but.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm back. I can always speak about diversity, equity, and inclusion. This is something that the college, members of the college, faculty, staff, students, have all spoken to us about for years. What diversity, equity, and inclusion does is allow us to look into our system and find out why some students succeed and why some don't, in ways that we can, that are within our control, basically. And it is, as a somebody in the public school element, I can tell you that it is really critical to analyze every system that you have, every policy that you put in place, and how it might benefit any one group over another, females versus males, by race, by ethnicity, by economics. I went to the ACCP conference last year, and they also talked about students who are parents and students who are not parents. So there's all kinds of ways that we have to look at ourselves and make sure that we're creating the best system for our county to be able to further itself, and be able to be successful in our, at our community college if they choose to come here. So it is not a surprise, there's no hidden agendas, there's no secrets. We've had meeting after meeting after meeting about this, and we adopted a strategic plan where this is one of our goals. So the manufactured faux outrage about this being some hidden agenda is completely false. And I know that false accusations and fake news is kind of the currency of the day, but we don't operate based on what's in style or not in style. We operate based on what is important for the success of our institution and the students who choose to come here to better themselves. So thank you very much. I am in support of a budget that includes DEI, because as part of the board that adopted the strategic plan, it is one of the critical components that we adopted in our strategic plan. Thank you so much.
Trustee, thank you, Trustee Laura Smith-Evatt. I see Trustee Ratan first, and then Trustee Hamel.
Related to Trustee Musial's comments, I would hope that we use these same contact lists and forms of communication to also share the good news about our wonderful college. That includes debate, sports, arts, and more. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Ratan. Trustee Hamel?
Yeah, so I wanted to bring up the idea of how much money we're talking about spending. I know it'd be exactly like $400,000 is not very much money, but you're looking at maybe doing a scholarship for 500 people. If you have, the average student is taking seven credit hours, we typically see right around there, dividing it by that, $700, you're looking at 521 students that we could actually make a major impact on. And I will say that if we could actually give full ride scholarships to 500-plus students with the $400,000, I believe that would be money much well better spent.
Thank you, Trustee Hamel. I, I thank you all for your input on this issue. I have to say, I'm proud that our college is a marketplace of ideas, and for all of the emails. Trustee Musial, I think I respectfully disagree. I counted more than 15, but I don't, I don't know how many it was. And I thank those folks for their involvement. You're, you're part of what, in my mind, makes this place so great. We welcome all comers, and we certainly appreciate your input, and it keeps us honest. I think it's a strength that strengthens our democracy as opposed to an adversary we have in Eurasia right now that believes in autocracy. So I thank you for, for your interest and your attention to our budget and these issues. I have to say, I almost cried. I mean, I love the idea of the abundance theory versus not the scarcity theory. I, I know many people in DC or even Topeka operate as if everything's a zero-sum game, and we're one of the wealthiest societies in the history of the planet, and Trustee Cook would not want me to say this, but in my faith structure, it was a, you know, a Jewish rabbi that had to flee to Egypt, and it was his inclusion and safety provided there that allowed him to succeed and go on with his ministry, where I always thought the teaching of the loves and the fishes was some miracle or bogus thing, frankly, as I struggled with my faith. And we're making no law with respect to religion here, but it's just one trustee bloviating. We had a minister at Asbury United Methodist who taught that it's a parable to say that if everybody brings what they can, nobody's going to go hungry. And it's amazing, my wife had surgery recently, and we had, it's like we had another kid. All these people are bringing us meals, and we're blessed, and I'm in an immense point of privilege here, but I see diversity, equity, and inclusion not only as a strategic market decision, but, but the right thing to do. And that's according to my faith structure, Judeo-Christian ethics, as I learned them in Catholic school and throughout my life. So I appreciate Trustee Ratan saying that, and I obviously added the religious component that I'm sure Dr. Bound will be happy to handle the fallout on. I do believe this is key, I'm a businessman, I, I love my role as a trustee, and probably a husband and father first, and businessman, and that allows me to be a trustee, and I'm proud to have served here for nine years, 10 years. And I believe the direct decisions we made, you know, the Sobchak administration had really record goals to end the let-the-market-decide philosophy. I mean, that influenced who we were and strategic decisions that we made, to make our cabinet, not only our faculty, but our cabinet and administration, look like the metro and the state that we serve. I think people sitting in our administration, I'm not sure they'd ever thought of it, it just occurred to me tonight, and you all are smarter than me. But our cabinet almost has strategic hires from national searches and local hirings, and as we opened up, and we passed a metro rate to go into Kansas City, Missouri, in certain zip codes, and, you know, we hired talent from there to make, to make a move on that market play. This is both the right thing to do and a market decision. So we expanded the metro rate, and our faculty, certain, I agree with Trustee Smith-Evatt, the faculty and students have supported this. We have some of the best and brightest students that compete with Ivy League schools. I mean, Brian Wright and our, many of our programs compete nationally, and I don't apologize at all, and I agree with those that have said, we pushed this for, for years, and it's been out in the open. And I, we sit at these meetings, we're over three hours sitting in this room, and the public certainly has had an opportunity to participate, and we thank you for your participation. In terms of how to ensure this happens throughout the campus, this is my idea, I've discussed it with no one. I, I think there should be, I'm throwing these numbers out, $50,000 or $100,000 bonus to departments that can come up with and implement the best DEI process, because I agree with Trustee Musial, I don't want this to simply be a cabinet position, and everybody ignores that person in their silo. The silo mindset drives me nuts, and the change of culture, you can blame me. I have helped push that, and I'm happy for it, and I'm proud of the people that got us through the pandemic, and the faculty, and the staff, and everybody that has got us to this point, I'm immensely proud of all of you. But the silo mentality just drives me crazy. And that's, I think some of it's inherent in the institution, I understand that, but we're coming into what will probably be a conservative time, and the last one was not fun, so we have to prepare for that. And so with all due respect, it's the right thing to do in a market decision for us to survive and advance in this world, and I fully support. And I frankly, if I had my druthers and I just argued for a higher mill rate, I'd pay more. So I appreciate the administration putting this in, and I appreciate all the comments on it. And I don't even know that we have a motion here, we just.
We don't. We do not have anything to vote on.
We have a motion to approve the management budget with the point five.
Did you, Greg, did you want to make a point of clarification about where scholarships come from?
Oh, well, one thing, Trustee Hamel mentioned that I think it's one of those legal nuances that you learn over time, is that, as I understand it, we cannot use general fund monies on scholarships.
Right.
Outside of our taxing district.
I'm sorry?
Outside of the taxing district.
Oh, outside of the taxing district? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I was, if I may, we, we have a motion that has been moved and seconded. Which motion are we even on?
Adopt the management budget with the point five.
To adopt the management budget, yes, of course. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
I have that the motion passes six to one.
Mr. Chair, just a point of clarification, do we need to say who? I know sometimes Ms. Schlitt has asked for that to be.
Well, I think the world knows it was Mark Hamel voted no. Is that what you're after?
Yeah, I realized that on the vote I left on, that I wasn't sure if we had to do that or not, I just was asking, sorry.
Well, if we could let the minutes reflect that Trustee Hamel voted no.
That's correct.
Okay. I have, the next item here is the Business Services Single Source Purchase Report. I'm looking at Kelsey, is that right? It's in the board packet on page 26, and the description of the single source purchase here is for vendor CDW. I am for the sake of time, and we covered this in the committee of the whole, right?
Yep, we did.
So we covered that in the baby cow. So here, it is the recommendation of the committee of the whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to improve the single source justification to CDW for various purchases in fiscal year '23 for an estimated amount of $300,000, and I would so move.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded, moved by myself, and seconded, I had Trustee Musial with the second.
It was louder.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. The next item is a single source purchase report for Team Dynamax, a three-year subscription to the college's Conference of IT Service Management System that you can read about page 26 if you haven't already done so. It is the recommendation of the committee of the whole that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the single source justification for a three-year subscription to Team Dynamax for $283,069.98. I would so move.
Second.
Second.
The motion has been moved by myself and seconded by trustee Laura Smith Everett. Any discussion? Any discussion? I know you were second. I just gave it to her. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 All those opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. The next item we have is an award of bids, RFPs for single purchase, $150,000 plus, as reported by the May 2022 Committee of the Whole, which actually met April 25th. The description is here in the board packet on page 27, and it is the recommendation of the committee of the whole that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid from R&amp;R Concrete for exterior stair replacement and dock repair in the amount of $147,360 with an additional 10% contingency of $14,736 to allow for possible unforeseen costs and a total estimated expenditure of $162,096. And I'd so move.
Second.
Trustee Smith Everett again is second on my motion. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. I believe this is our last item. Is that right?
It is.
We have an award of bid for the 22074 MTC Circle Drive Upgrade. The caption and the description is on your board packet at page 28. It is the recommendation of the committee of the whole, the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid from R&amp;R Concrete for Midwest Trust Center MTC Circle Drive Upgrade in the amount of $283,620 with an additional 10% contingency of $28,362 to allow for the possible unforeseen costs for a total estimated expenditure of $311,982. And I'll make this motion so long as somebody reads this stuff next time.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
I was trying to get you to laugh. That's fine. The motion has been moved and seconded. All those, any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those in favor, all those opposed, no? The motion passes unanimously. Mr. President, I, no, no, no. We have the now president's recommendations for actions.
Treasurer's report.
Beginning with the treasurer's report. And I'll read that, too.
No. Oh, no, Mr. Chairman, please.
Please, thank you.
I would not want to penalize the group with such things. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The following pages in your packet contain the treasurer's report for the month ending March 31st, 2022. An ad valorem tax distribution of $3,917,781 was received from the county treasurer on March 18th and was distributed as follows in your packet. Don't know that I need to go over each of those. Don't know.
Page 32 for the viewer's viewing pleasure.
Yes. General, I'll do it just for the sake of transparency. In the general fund, $3,687,399. Special assessment fund, $14,608. Capital outlay fund, $215,774 for a total of $3,917. Making sure that that is a comma, yes. It is the recommendation of the college administration that the board of trustees approve the treasurer's report for the month of March 2022, subject to audit. And I will make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded by trustee Ingram. She raised her hand. I saw it.
Musa?
Second.
Any discussion on the treasurer's report here? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No? The ayes have it. The motion passes unanimously, and I believe, Mr. President, the floor is yours.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate everyone's good discussion this evening. I know that together you have worked through some weighty issues, and I greatly appreciate your leadership and your perspectives as we move through these things. All right, we're going to jump into my report. You had the opportunity to spend some time with Caitlin, again, another one of our fine students. And let's talk about enrollment. The one spring report that I'm going to provide you is with the continuing ed group, which is the number that continues to move and continues to surpass both of the two previous years in terms of the number of students served. They've had an absolutely fantastic year. As often the case, in times like this, you see strong enrollment from continuing ed. So appreciate, Alisa, the work that you and your team is doing to continue to meet the needs of, of individuals and organizations across our service area and beyond. What I wanted to do next is take a look at summer. We're down 11% in head count. I can tell you in my conversations with other presidents, I'm hearing schools that are down 18% for summer not being out of the norm. And so while I don't like this, and I'm sure none of us are pleased with this, we are in a somewhat favorable position to where other community colleges are in our region and beyond. Summer from a continuing ed standpoint is ahead of pace for the last two years, as it has been throughout this year. The continuing ed enrollment continues to grow. If you recall, last time, we talked about the shift downward in the goal for the year, excuse me, for the summer, in that historically, the adult ed numbers have from the year transferred back into the summer enrollment, which skews summer because it's the only season where numbers continue to grow long after the season. So that's where we are from an enrollment for summer standpoint. For fall, we are very, very, very early in the cycle. We are off 3%. Again, that's not out of line with what other community colleges are experiencing, and we've got lots of time with the expectation that we continue to address that. Students at this time of year wait to see, especially when they get close to the end of the semester, they wait to see how they do with their summer, or their fall, their spring courses before they enroll for the coming fall semester as well as for summer. So we will continue to see a shift in summer, although we're getting close to the start, so it's not going to be, we're not going to see dramatic changes, but we have the opportunity to significantly influence the fall semester's enrollment. I'd like to ask Dr. McLeod to come and talk to us briefly, or at least concisely, about this, as the, yeah, anyways. Dr. McLeod, he's our executive vice president, chief academic officer.
First, I will say thank you very much for a lot of the robust conversation tonight. This is a look at where we are going with multiple measures in placement. Over the years, we have had a number of placement conversations, whether that be numbers for test scores, which test we are using, how that approaches. Under Dr. Bound's leadership, we have started to move in a direction that opens the doors for more students to be easier placed into coursework here at Johnson County that will take us away from high-stakes testing as the sole approach to entering into college-level coursework. Over this past year, we've worked with folks in math, English, and reading to look at the gateway courses at this institution, which are those formative courses that transfer most often and are the foundation of a solid college opportunity for all students, whether that be a formative math class in college algebra, looking at comp one and two as those formative research and development courses for students in their writing skills, looking at reading as a fundamental portion for students who come to us in an under-prepared way, as something that is not a college level, but coursework that we do offer to help students be able to navigate all of their other coursework and textbooks. And under this, we have started to look at ways of looking at students' prior achievement and rewarding them for the work that they have put forth on their way to us. So we are implementing strategies that look not simply at ACT scores or at Acuplacer scores, but also looking at the GPA overall that a student brings with them, last class, successfully passed with a B or better in math. Our English department has taken on some extra work in looking at writing samples for those students who would like to prove their worth in readiness but who are not great test takers and maybe have some, some test anxiety. They're able to write their way into these courses with a group of our, our English faculty looking at that, that work and testing their way in, in that way. And so we are creating multiple avenues for students to be able to access what we offer here at Johnson County. This will speed the way to completed degrees and certificates. It will also allow a larger number of our students to not be placed on, on the treadmill that we here discuss nationally with regard to a student testing in three levels below an entry-level college course and then taking an extra three semesters before they can even take the gateway course that begins to get them to a degree. This work has been undertaken by a number of faculty members in these departments. My department has simply provided some oversight and direction, but the chairs of these departments have really taken it on with their faculty to do a great deal of this work. And I think to highlight, you know, I would be remiss if I did not speak to some of the comments that were made earlier in discussing where we are with our budget about us doing less. I have now spent a quarter century in public education. I will tell you that in the year 2000, though our numbers might look the same, we did not have a robust academic resource center offering free tutoring to every student who attends this institution. I can assure you that our English, math, history instructors were able to do their work with a textbook and a whiteboard and a felt tip pen, which is not something that is possible today. The technology used in our classrooms, the amount of services that we offer to our students, the amount of time spent on task, and the staff robustly filled to actually do the work that is required to meet the needs of students who sometimes, because of the failures that we have experienced as a nation and our K-12 systems come to us woefully underprepared, are what we are paying for with the budget monies that you expend as a member of this board. It is important to each of you in your service to understand that, and it is important to me as chief academic officer of this institution to make sure that I represent this faculty in a way that explains to you what every dollar spent goes towards. It goes to the business of our business, which is the education of not just young minds, but the retraining of people looking to change their lives and is one of the cornerstones on which this institution is built. So thank you for your time in actually debating those matters, but I always would like to, in my role, make sure that I help to remind what this institution is, what it is about, and what it is founded on.
Thank you.
May I just jump in and say thank you? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McLeod.
I appreciate the multiple measures of placement. Just personally, I've got a couple of kids that love, that do great on tests, and then I got one that's got test anxiety. And so I like that you're bringing in a more holistic approach to how you place students and help them succeed.
If I may interrupt, Dr. Bound, do you mind if we comment real quick?
That's fine.
Okay. Did you have something?
In a minute. You want to go?
No.
I just, the last part is inspirational. The first part is a major milestone from where we were in 2018 when Acuplacer was changed and we found out about the limited access we had in some of our programs. So that is, I mean, things move slow, slowly around here. Not that they do faster anyplace else, but that is an incredible part of the innovation and sea change that we needed to do so that students had access to a community college, which is not the flagship university of the state of Kansas, which is in Lawrence, but is a place where people can start. And so I thank you, everybody, for their hard work, including the leaders in those And the early resistance sounds like we've convinced everybody that this is in the best interest of students. And then what I liked about the end is, our, our part as elected trustees is to explain to people why we're spending what we're spending when our credit hours are down and our students are down. And that was kind of my challenge thrown out tonight, and I've thrown it out before. I need staff to help us explain that. And I might not, I might not agree with your justification on all of it, but whiteboard or blackboard maybe back then compared to a computer technology and Wi-Fi in every classroom everywhere is a, is a big reason why we're doing that. And we provide other services, just like K-12, who are doing a whole lot more than teaching now than they were 20 years ago. So that, I really appreciate that, and I know how much that means to you to support those students who need the extra help. Thanks, Mickey.
I need to jump in here as a point of privilege and say, thank you, Mickey, and I think we have a shared sister school flagship that, thanks to the, I wrote this down because I wanted to go through innovation, conservation, and production of the teaching at that school, that we're in a unique position to survive this little Ukrainian crisis. So without the grain and food production that gets taught and innovated at K-State, we wouldn't be. Now, I want to beat you a lot. Please don't misunderstand my love for your institution, but it's a shared flagship.
I will never misunderstand your love.
And thank you, Dr. Bound. Any other comments for, for Dr. McLeod?
Trustee Smith Everett, raise your hand up.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. I, I literally am blind. It kept me out of the Navy.
Still here.
Go ahead.
Still here.
Please, trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you very much. I want to thank Mr. McLeod for that clarity from your vantage point. I think that's a really important component that we have to be reminded of over and over in our positions. I'm going to have a little umbrage with the comment about K-12, and I'm going to just defend my profession. I'm sorry, I'm going to take a point of privilege. What K-12 now has is students who come that have not had meals, have not slept. We had a recent child at my school who was nominated for gifted, and at the parent meeting, the parent cried. She works three jobs, she does not see her son, and she did not know he was smart. So we have incredible pressures on children and families, and K-12 can't do it. And because K-12 can't do it all and students are coming unprepared, then we have, as a community college, are called to be an equalizer, to prepare them if they want to go on or to provide them with the skills so that they can be successful without a bachelor's degree in our economy and be productive citizens. And I feel very strongly, as you do, Dr. McLeod, that that is a critical part. And I thank you for your presentation on the testing, because I, like, like trustee Ratan said, I was an anxiety test kid. I could do great in class, and I bombed every major test I ever took. And I think this equals the playing field. There was a story that I heard recently that a student dropped out of their college algebra courses. It's not college algebra, college calcul- It's not college algebra, college calculus, excuse me, because they had never been required to use a graphing calculator, didn't know what it was on the syllabus, took the first exam, did all the problems by hand, failed, and dropped out. The difference in education is wide and varying, and if some of our students come from a school or a district that doesn't have graphing calculators, those students come not knowing how to do that. And it's our job to get them to the point where they can do it. My question back to Dr. Bound and team is, how are we going to communicate this change? How will students know that this is our new policy? And what are we doing to sell this as a way for some of those students who, I believe really strongly math is a make or break for some people, for a lot of people, actually? And I would like to know how we're going to tool this so that we can get the message out there that you can take our courses and be able to do, do it with these multiple measures.
Initially, coming this fall, we will be piloting this, making sure that all of the systems are in place while we are running it through our ed affairs so that it is part of our general catalog. And then, once we have it through educational affairs and our curriculum process, it will be part of the catalog and will be communicated through counseling as well as through all of our normal channels, through our College Nowadays, through our orientation, and through all of our enrollment processes. So we're working right now with the student development team to make sure that the messaging is correct and that we have everything in place. So this fall will serve as a pilot, starting with those students who are entering their College Now coursework, to make sure that we have everything in place that makes this a seamless transition for all of the students and that we can automate that process so that folks get automatic feedback when they go to enroll and input their transcripts and information.
Thank you, Dr. McLeod.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask if we can move along now.
I'm going to move along.
No, it's not your fault.
Nope. That's, we've had a full night. So if we bring up PowerPoint just real quick, a couple more slides. I first, next would like to say thank you. Thank you to Dr. Randy Weber, who has had such a profound impact on this institution and the profession of those who have worked through student affairs, student success, administration, and deeply committed to the success of all students. He started out as a student at Barton Community College, KU, and then Baker for his doctorate. He started his career at Allen County, did a stint in Colorado at Pike's Peak, and was recruited to come back here to Kansas, where he's served since 2015 here at Johnson County Community College. I think those of you who've been around for a while know that Dr. Weber has been instrumental in the leadership of this college over time. And I think back particularly as we entered this pandemic period of the life of this world, Randy was somebody and continues to be somebody that this college looks to for his leadership. And so I would like to say from the bottom of my heart how pleased I am that Randy will be taking on the leadership of Rogue Community College in Oregon, and to call him, as I've considered him to be a peer for many years, to see him step into that role of president and know that Rogue Community College is in excellent hands as they move forward. And so I'd like to say, Randy, thank you so much. I think his wave was, I've been here tonight long enough.
Yeah, really.
I told him he had 30 minutes to be quick. So anyways, last slide. And this is where I say to you as trustees, this next week is payday for you. And I say that with all the respect and love in the world. We could never pay you enough.
Oh, you could try.
I've agreed to take, you know, all of Dawn's pay and give it to you. And, excuse me, trustee Ratan.
Mine's the lowest.
Yeah. Look, the reality is, this is a time of celebration for our college, as it is at colleges across the country. And as we move over this next week from the honors graduation tomorrow night, where a dozen students will be recognized for their academic excellence, as we move over this next week through each of the penning ceremonies in our nursing and allied health programs, as I know you will participate in those, those are deeply meaningful celebrations for our students, for their family, and for our faculty and staff. And it will culminate next Friday, excuse me, nope, we've got before that, we've got the GED graduation. If you've never been to that, you are in for a delight. And then finally, we will close it out with our 52nd commencement on May 20th, and I look forward to celebrating our students with you throughout this coming week. And so to the faculty and staff who've worked so hard for another successful year, as we anticipate that our numbers for graduation this year, looking at all those who have graduated and those who have applied compared to where we were a year ago, I said this last time, we were more than 25% up over where we were at this point in time last year, which means that while the numbers may be smaller on the front end of the funnel, this college continues to do a better and better job of helping students persist, progress, and complete. And so I say fantastic work. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to everyone who helped put that together and helps make this college go so we can put our students first. The next item is new business, and I think...
I actually have something.
Yeah. Trustee, trustee Coeston.
I actually would like to say a few words for new business, if I might.
Sure.
Our trustee code of conduct encourages us, encourages us to welcome and encourage active cooperation by citizens of our district, but it also warns us to resist influencing the vote or actions of other board members or the actions of any employee through the threat, promise of rewards, deception, exchange of votes, or by means other than legitimate open discussion. As a new trustee, I've been incredibly pleased with the level of transparency and robust open discussion that this administration and this board affords us and our community. Every document, including budgets, are published on our website and easily discovered with a simple search. Every meeting is streamed and recorded. We have an open forum. President Bound meets with stakeholders daily, weekly, monthly, and frequently does video announcements about critical decisions. We have all received emails regarding tonight's agenda, and I believe we all value input of any sort. But I personally resent that anyone on this board would use a tactic of misinformation and intimidation to score political points. These tactics do not build goodwill, nor do they advance the dialogue in a productive way. I will not be intimidated tonight or in any future discussions by such tactics. I would appreciate a commitment from all members of this board that we try to avoid scoring political points with any one group and work with all stakeholders to find solutions and resolve conflicts on behalf of the common good. And that's my statement for tonight.
Thank you, trustee Coeston. I will say, and I know it may have been old hat to some of us and frustrating to those of you that had to go through new trustee orientation, the reason I asked for the review of the code of conduct in our bylaws was just so that everyone was aware of them, and I thank you for making that statement. I do want...
Give a hand up.
Yeah, I need to ask, I'm going to make a motion at some point and ask for a second and then have something to discuss, but let's go to trustee Hamel. Thank you, Dr. Bound.
Yes, thank you. So I do find it interesting that sharing what's going on with the board, with our community, and receiving emails from the community is seen as a sign of intimidation. That seems very interesting to me. I was leaving it at that.
Thank you, trustee Hamel. I think trustee Ingram and I have discussed the presidential review. I know that we've used a form in the past, that I know trustee Musial and trustee Cook did. We're going to be looking at that in the next coming days. And then I'd like to make a motion that we do a trustee review of Dr. Bound. Dr. Bound is going to begin his individual assessment here for us, I think on June 1st. I forget the exact date.
I'll get to you at the beginning of June.
But I will be sending around a form, probably stealing heavily from whatever trustee Musial and Cook used. And I'm deferring...
I think Terry has it.
Terry has that. So I suppose I'm asking, I'm going to make that motion that we do a trustee review of Dr. Bound. We've done that for past presidents and prior years, and if I could have a second, that would be great.
A second.
The motion has been moved by myself and seconded by trustee Ingram. Is there any discussion, any discussion? And for the new trustees, I think it's an important part. As I learned to, how to participate in this process, I learned that this was a critical role to have a voice and to have your observations and thoughts be heard. So I think it's critical that we do this. It's a check and a balance so that we have an internal review of Dr. Bound, which should be kept confidential as it is an employment matter. And yet, it gives all of us a chance to, we do two things really here, and that's to pass a budget annually and then hire a president. And so I want to make sure we are reviewing him so that we're not just rubber-stamping what he does and our thoughts are heard and understood. Then we have his review, then we have all of ours. Ours are typically made available at a certain time that folks can come in here and read, the trustees can come in here and read. In June, and then we have an executive session after the June meeting discussing Andy's review of his contract and his status as a president. So I may have fumbled that. Certainly, I would defer to trustee Musial, Ingram, or Laura Smith Everett, but this is something we do annually, and I want to make sure we keep up with it. Trustee Ingram reminded me, I think yesterday, that we needed to do this. So are there any questions or any discussion beyond that?
I think I would just add that there will be a timeline, and so once we get that timeline established...
Yes, I don't know what it is.
Well, I don't know if Terry's in here or not, but anyway, that we will...
My goal would be to get this done in discussion with you here by June 1st, and then have the individual reviews of Dr. Bound in no later than June. Usually Terry Slish is chasing me to get mine in by June 5th. So that way, the staff can compile them and have them ready to go for review prior to the June meeting, and then we can have an informed discussion come the executive session in June. So...
I think it was the executive session in July that was suggested. So, but again, I think it's just appropriate to share that there will be a timeframe.
Well, I don't care. You want to do July? That's fine.
I will say that from my standpoint, it will give our staff more time to be able to...
That's fine.
...gather and for you as trustees to provide that input. I have no problem, you know, from an employment standpoint, if we do the performance review in our July meeting.
That's fine. My memory is June. I'm not disputing, I'm just communicating.
We did it July last year, but historically, it's been June, and I think with...
I think variety is a spice of life. That's great. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 All those opposed? So we will get that out to you for your review and consideration, and then I think, obviously, we'll have a greater timeline here. I don't mean to have a, the general authority thank you to issue a review, and then we'll get a tighter timeframe on a timeline, so.
Can I ask for a point of, did someone say we're not having a meeting in June? Did I hear that earlier? We do meet in June.
No, we will meet in June.
Usually, it's a shorter meeting. I mean...
I just misheard something.
Any other new business? Trustee Smith Everett?
No, I think you, I think that's in reference to college council. You did say that you wouldn't be meeting in June, but that was in reference to college council.
Yeah, yeah. So none of the new business?
Correctly, yeah, sorry.
I don't know of any old business that we have. We're now on to the consent agenda. Does any trustee wish to discuss anything on the consent agenda or pull any item off for discussion? Seeing none...
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I was going to ask for a motion.
I second.
Trustee Musial makes the motion, and trustee Ingram seconded. All those, any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. The motion passes unanimously. I do not believe we have an executive session. Do we?
We do not.
Therefore, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Tell me second.
We all seconded.
I think trustee Ingram moved. Trustee Ratan seconded.
We all seconded.
Third, fourth, fifth.
Have a good evening, have a good weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you.